Good evening. This is the monthly school board meeting of October 5th, 2020, being held at the Krista McAuliffe Auditorium of the Concord High School. We have board, remote board members that are participating, and we have board members that are participating in person. Since there is a quorum here in person, we do not have to meet under the governor's emergency orders. Tonight, we will have two periods of public comment. The first period will be on agenda items only. The second period will be on any item that anyone would like to bring up. And in addition, comments will be able to be made here in person, but also through teams or on the phone. And thank you, Mr. Dunn, for coordinating that for us. I will ask that people who are participating remotely to please mute your microphone until you're recognized for speaking, just to keep the airwaves without too much noise and background. Let's see, people who are making comments here in the auditorium in person, we have a microphone here and one here. I would suggest that you come down the aisle. We have one-way aisles here. Please come down to this microphone here, and when you're finished, walk across and then up the backside. That way, maintaining social distancing. In addition, we will be sanitizing the microphone in between our speakers. So hopefully, that's taken care of that bit of housekeeping. And of course, anyone who would like to make comments to the board via email on agenda items or on any topic is always to welcome, welcome to make them either to conqueredinfo@saue8.org or to any or all board members. We're always looking for your input, and we appreciate it all throughout the month. So let's see, before we get started on the approval of the agenda and our rest of our agenda, I do have a letter that I would like to read. It's signed by me on behalf of the Concord School Board. I'd like to read this to, it is to Deborah DePaster and the Concord Women's Club Maskmakers. Dear Mr. Mrs. DePaster, on behalf of the Concord School Board and district staff, I want to thank you and your members for the donation of over 2,000 masks to our student and staff. Absolutely amazing. Thank you so much. We also appreciate the accommodations made, and I think there'll be a video that'll show some of this because I really want to share it with you. It's just absolutely amazing. The accommodations were made to have clear inserts sewn into over 200 of these masks. This modification is especially useful to our youngest learners who like to, who want to, need to be able to see someone speak as well as to hear them. We're in awe of the incredible number of hours that your mask makers group has given to fashion masks for our students and staff. The COVID-19 pandemic has certainly required the district to establish protocols to keep everyone safe, and the wearing of masks is a number one priority of us. You'll hear us talk about it all throughout the evening. It's been heartwarming to see these efforts by your members to ensure our children and staff are safe. The citizens of Concord have time and time again supported the needs of our school district, and we are always grateful. The 2,000-plus handmade masks are just another example of the Concord community stepping up to assist our public schools and our school community. Thank you, an emphatic thank you. As a board, we're grateful for the Women's Club's work on behalf of the district, and the students are very, very grateful. It's signed by me, and October, on October 3rd, 2020, and we will be giving this to you, but I wanted to publicly recognize the Concord Women's Club's maskmakers for their absolutely outstanding effort. I just have to say thank you. Great job. So it's nice, nice to be able to start a meeting on that tone. It is just truly amazing that the community cooperation with the school. Tonight, let's see, we have our agenda, and the first order of business will be the approval of tonight's agenda. It includes both reports from the administration, some personnel items, and then committee meetings and reports on that, and any other business, as well as our proposed meeting. As I said before, there will be public comment. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, or unless someone has an amendment they would like to adjourn to.
I would make the motion.
Okay, it's moved by Ms. Higgins. Please remind me to look back up here so I'd notice the board members behind me. So the motion has been to move to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Poynier. Let's, let's have a roll call vote for everything because we do have a couple of members that are, that are present. And actually, after the approval of the agenda, we will call the roll too. So Ms. Higgins, can you do both of those items for us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
So Gina, yes, yea or nay to approving the agenda?
Are we doing the motion first?
Oh, I already moved it, and Liza seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay, then aye. I just needed to know what I was responding to.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck Crush?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David Parker?
Aye.
And Mr. Cotto was absent tonight.
Okay.
So the ayes that you all heard are our present school board members, so I'd like to include that as our, as our roll call.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to, at this time, recognize our newest member onto the board, our student member, who is sitting right over here. I haven't had a chance to really talk with her yet, but we're very excited to have her onboard. This is Janita Aquino Putson?
Putson.
Putson. It's close. Janita is a student representative from the junior class at Concord High School.
Yes.
We are very anxious to hear her insights and her, her advice, and we're really happy that you could be on the board with us for the, for the remainder of this year. Welcome, Janita.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Do you want to tell, take a minute or so and tell us a little about yourself or your, your classes or what, what you're doing in school?
So my name's Jennifer Aquino Putson. A lot of people know me as.
Janita, the first thing we learned from Janita's comments is that you pull the microphone close, so. Thank you.
There you go. So my name's Jennifer Aquino Putson, but a lot of people know me as Janita. I'm a junior. I play, I used to play varsity soccer, but I decided not to this year due to COVID. I like to rock climb, and I enjoy, you know, being with friends and all that teenager stuff. I'm taking a CRTC program, Criminal Justice. I'm thinking about becoming an immigration paralegal, although I'm also very interested in becoming a wildlife biologist. So they're very different fields, but they both draw interest to me.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And will we be hearing from you folks a little bit later?
Yes.
I thought we might. Thank you. Okay.
Welcome.
Getting a little feedback, Josh, from my upfront here. I don't know if.
Try it back here.
Okay, no, do you need us to do anything?
Keep doing what you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of board minutes. The monthly board meeting on September 8th are included in your packet. So does anyone have any changes or additions or deletions from the minutes? If not, then if I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Okay, approved or moved by Liza Poynier, and we have a second. Seconded by Danielle Smith. Thank you. And Ms. Higgins, can you call the vote?
Yes. Gina?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
I say aye, and Tom is absent.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So at this point, we will go to the reports from the school and the administration, and I believe first up is the student representatives' report. Will you be starting this out, Ms. Richards?
I will be.
Thank you.
Okay.
I need to turn around for this one. Do we have video?
We do not have video.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just gonna, we're gonna start with a little introduction. So, good evening, members of the board. As you may know, this is our first official meeting as the student representatives to the board for the 2020 to 2021 school year. We are very happy to be here. For those who may not know me, my name is Alice Richards. I am this year's senior class representative, continuing on from my role last year as the junior class representative. Within our school community, I'm involved in several clubs. I hold leadership roles in EnviroCor, Feminism Now, Sock Club, and NHS, as well as being involved in student government. Outside of school, I'm typically at dance, where I attend classes six days a week. And after this year, I plan to go to college with a focus in public policy and governance with education studies.
Good evening.
Tucker, yeah, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Aquino Putson, but many people know me as Janita. I'm looking forward to being this year's junior representative and all the work we have ahead of us. I participated in Concord High's varsity soccer team for two years, but I chose not to participate this year due to COVID. I am in the Criminal Justice CRTC program. I am part of the Be the Change Club and Student Government. I rock climb three days a week with the New Hampshire Rock and Fitness Climbing and love to go backpack, backpacking. After high school, I am thinking of studying the criminal justice system in hopes of becoming an immigration lawyer or studying wildlife biology.
Immigration. So currently, we're in our, the midst of our transition into hybrid learning, which might be reported on a little bit more later tonight. So today was the first day with just freshmen in the building. CHS is now split into cohorts one and two. The school is divided roughly in half, with of course, consideration for those students who have chosen to remain fully remote. So once we reach a typical schedule in the next few weeks, the cohort days will alternate, determining which students are in person. So cohort one students are at CHS Monday and Thursday, and then cohort two students are at CHS Tuesday and Friday. And Wednesdays include synchronous remote learning, time for all students, time with teachers, and time to hold club meetings, which is super helpful. Our administration has created a detailed plan for the next few weeks in order to help students acclimate to the new schedule and the adjustments for this Friday's professional day, the holiday on Monday, and senior SATs next Wednesday that Janita will talk a little more about.
So next week, Wednesday, October 14th, all seniors will take the SATs at Concord High School. No other students will be in the building this day, and students will be separated throughout many classrooms. Due to COVID-19, many SATs have been canceled, including the planned one for our seniors, formed juniors at school last March, at school last March. This test acts typically as the junior year standardized testing, and also can be used for many college applications. So with our other new steps for this year, Concord High has switched to a completely competency-based system. So we're now having grading that's reported on a one through four scale. It's an adjustment for teachers and students, but the integration we've had in the past few years with competencies has made the transition a lot easier for us. Throughout this, throughout this year, we really look forward to continued dedication and making sure students' voices reach the district level. We've already seen lots of progress since the last time, since last time this year, and are really looking forward to, for the momentum to continue. Our continued goal is to share with members of the board and those watching what is happening at CHS, while also connecting the student body and district work and dedications. We've seen the power of students' voice and know it needs to be continued at places like the Concord School District.
And that is the end of our report for tonight. Thank you all.
No, thank, thank you very, thank you very much. And we very much look forward to your participation, not only in the, in the meetings of the board, but on our committees and, and the input to some of the initiatives that will be taken. We, we very much value your input. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions or any?
Thank you.
Okay. Then I will ask the superintendent to make her report.
Great job, ladies. Thank you. It's always good to hear. Well, today was a great day. It really was a kickoff for something that has been in the planning phases for quite a while since the decision was made to go to hybrid. And so today, we welcomed some very happy faces. I had a chance to be out in the buildings and saw some kindergarten and first graders either come off a bus or from their mom and dad's car, or some walkers come to school, very happy, and just pleased to be there. The organization at the elementary school that I saw this morning was fabulous. Every detail was covered. Our teachers were out there helping in any way they could. Temperatures were taken. Sanitizers were given to the kids when they kid off the bus, and then met with their teachers, and then went into their school buildings. So it was a wonderful kickoff. At our middle and high school, we had a lot of wonderful things happen. Same thing, good organization. I visited all the sixth grade classrooms today. I stuck my head in, asked, asked the students, were they glad to be back? And without, without a doubt, they were very happy to be back and to be with their friends and to be with their teachers and to know that they will be brought back in some bit of normal in school environment. So it was, it was really neat to see. Tomorrow, we will also be out in the buildings. The staff. The staff from the central office will be, will be visible throughout the district, visiting schools and being there to assist and give a hand wherever possible. So, in terms of a start, I'm very pleased with what happened. Now, now I want, now I gave you all the wonderful things and I, you know, I like to start off positive, but we do have some issues that we have to deal with. It wasn't perfect. And we know that we had some, some families that really wanted to be in hybrid. They were in remote, they wanted, the youngsters wanted to be in hybrid. We had trouble integrating them because of the class sizes. And what I mean by that is some of the building, some of the class size of a room is, like for instance, in the, over at Runlet, some of those rooms are only like 750 square feet. Well, you know, that's limited. Usually you see a classroom of around 900 to 1,000. So, you have to be careful that you can't put too many youngsters in those classes. So, we're working at that. We took numbers for every class. My understanding is the principal has reached out to those families and made the accommodations necessary. I will double check that again in the morning, but you know, as we met this morning and they were in the process of notifying the families so that we could make the adjustments. Some youngsters came in, some decided to stay in remote. We had people leave hybrid and stay in remote. So, it went both ways. It wasn't just one or the other. So, they were trying to balance those numbers, because you, you just can't have 50 kids in one session or one section. So, we're working on that. At the high school, we know that there were, there's a couple of sections that have high numbers, which again, created too many youngsters in the classroom. And again, remember the protocols that we have adopted, and that's that six-foot distancing, and that's critical. That's a layer of safety. The masks, the social distancing, the hand washing are all those protocols and temperature taken and the screening, of course, that we've put in place. So, we have to adjust some classes, and I know that the principal at the high school will be, will be working with the staff on that. As you know, we have some youngsters in hybrid. Great percentage of our youngsters are in hybrid. We're, we're over 80% of the youngsters in hybrid. And, and the remaining students are fully remote with remote teachers. The systems that we put in place, what I mean by that, the bus transportation, it was awesome. Those buses were rolling in on time. And, and let me tell you, that, that wasn't just like run the bus through the city. That took time, because there's some kids that were hybrid, some were staying home, so they had to identify where they had to go to pick up youngsters and make sure that they get to school on time. And they did it. So, kudos to our transportation system and our wonderful drivers, who were just as excited, by the way, to come back to school and be with, with their kids, as they tell me. And they miss their kids, so that was neat. We also had food service up and running, so that we were preparing meals for the youngsters. As you know, we had to make accommodations for that also. Tonight, before you go, take a peek down the hallway in the great hallway upstairs. They've had tables so that we can have kids separated, so that they can be monitored by, and provided supervision, but also have their lunch in a safe way that doesn't, it's not a crowded cafeteria. So, we've spread out all the places where the youngsters can eat, so that we don't worry about that for them either. So, all in all, I would say that today went well. We'll continue to address those issues that came up and, and address them for the families. Just looking at my notes to make sure. I guess my final word, this doesn't happen, you know, in isolation. It doesn't happen with one or two people doing the work. It happens with everybody engaged, you know? And we've heard from our drivers and our custodians who prepared the buildings and our food service, who, who had meals ready, and not just a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. I mean, they still made creative lunches for the kids, so that it would be appetizing and they would be excited about, about have, sharing their lunch at school. And our teachers were fabulous. I mean, they, they have just worked day and night, and I'm so appreciative of that. And I know they, it's been frustrating. There's a lot of emotions to it. They had the same anxieties that everyone else has about, am I going to be safe? Is this going to be okay? But I think that they've seen by being in the building, participating, meeting with their teammates. I think the teachers have really risen to the, to the challenge and have delivered for the city, for the school district, but mostly for our kids. Our administrators, as you know, I said last week, I was so proud of them and their scheduling, their effort to meet the needs of their families. They have worked around the clock. I mean, they were still working, trying to resolve issues this weekend. And so, I have my hats off to them. And of course, our central office staff have been right there supporting everyone, and I can't, I'm, Donna Paly, our assistant superintendent, has just worked over and above. She's been there for everything, and I'm very grateful for, for her effort, especially with this project. So, I guess I'll take some questions, because I'm sure you've heard some things and you may have some questions. So, before I go into my other sections on my report, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I mostly have a comment. So, I have a lot of really good friends in the community, and I saw a video this morning of a little kindergartner getting dropped off. Oh, my gosh, so her sister's a second grader, and there's mom and dad. And she goes up and gets her temperature taken, and then she turns around and panicked, and she runs back and gets hugs, and then she skips off. So, of course, it made me cry. So, I messaged, I sent out, replied to the post, okay, I'm crying now. And her big sister went home and was in her Zoom class, you know, her second grade, crying, missing her little sister, but it was just the sweetest, it was just so normal. It was just so normal, even with the thermometer and the mask. So, yeah, we have a ton of work to do. It's not going to be easy or smooth, but in this mess, there are these little moments that are precious. So, that's what I'll share.
Do we have any other questions? And please let me know if someone behind me has a hand up. Kathleen, I have a question. And thank you very much for the report, and very much thank you to all of the teachers, the staff and bus drivers and food service, all the people who worked, are working very hard. Extremely difficult job for them to do. It's a pretty tough job in normal times in, with regards to education, but I know it is extremely tough during these times. Were there any issues with getting off of buses and into classes with regards to distancing or masks or any of those issues? And, and I expect there'll be a few here and there always until we learn, but were there anything significant that we should be aware of?
No, I was, the students that I observed all, all came in with masks. There were a couple of students that didn't have them, but we just got an incredible shipment of masks. And so, the principal at one of the schools asked me to go fetch them, and I ran into the building to get them for the students that either forgot them or, you know, didn't have them at the moment. And so, no, that was not a problem. The social distancing was observed very well, and, and like they put up like stakes, colored stakes, of course, and they, they were all distanced so many feet apart, and the youngsters stood there, and then they, they, they went with their teacher. So, I watched them walk in the hallways, because that's the other piece over at Runlet Middle School. You know, they're a little bit older, so you're not sure, you know how they are. They, they like to bump and, and bump and run, as I say, you know, all the time. They're very active, very physical at that age. That was not what I observed today. I observed youngsters with their teacher walking all over the building, because you know, that's why we wanted sixth grade in there by themselves. We wanted them to be the big deal this week, get all the attention from everyone as they learned the ropes at Runlet Middle School. And they, they, they were like, they were like little chicks following Mother Hen. They were perfect. So, you know, I don't have any, I'm, I'm very happy with that. And, and the teachers have really, and administrators, all of them, nurses, everyone, have really made an extra effort to make sure kids understand the reasons for the masks and, and why we're doing this, so.
Thank you. I, I did see as we came into the high school, I see the one-way signs and the one-way stair signs, they seem very clear, like everyone else who is in attendance tonight. You know, I had my questions and temperature taken, and it was very quick and very smooth and very efficient, and I thank you for that. I guess my only concern is, is with classes that could get too big. Do we have any contingency, or do you need the board to look into anything with regards to spaces? I appreciate the very well-laid out and useful space that I saw in what they call Main Street right out here, and I think that was great. But is there something that we should be attending to and getting in front of now?
Well, under the direction of Principal Riordan, they were able to use some of the locker areas. They removed lockers, they're wide open spaces, so they're using some of those areas. And we, we know that we have teachers who are remote, so their classrooms are vacant if they're not in doing their remote. Some of them come in, you know, and do their remote from, from their classroom. Some of them are doing it from home. It depends on what their particular needs are. But we have determined that we could use some help with monitors or proctors. In other words, we have some youngsters who are zooming in remotely into a class, especially at the high school where there's a particular class that only maybe has one section or two sections, you know? And so, we know that it's difficult for teacher to be watching the students in front of them and then have youngsters in remote, so we're looking to hire some extra proctors, if you will. That will also enable us to, if the class gets too large, we can split it a little bit and, and reduce the numbers in that class.
Have we posted these?
We also had one more person, one more group that we wanted to, we felt we needed a little extra help for our school nurses. So, we've, we've been out looking for LPNs to help with that. So, that's kind of where we're at. We've been using our monies from CARES Act, where we got our fingers crossed that we'll be getting some more money from, from the feds, as well as the state. The governor has additional monies for schools, so. And as I said to you, I think at the last meeting, the finance meeting, I sent a list of needs to legislators. They will be meeting on Wednesday, and on behalf of the district, I asked them to consider, these are the kinds of things that we need if we're going to continue in this environment. So, we're knocking on every door to see what's available for us in terms of funding to do these projects.
Have we posted on our website or in other areas the, the monitor proctor position yet, or will we be doing that this week?
No, we've already done it. We did it last week with our director, posted those positions last week.
Thank you, Superintendent. I see that some of the other board members have questions. Mr. Parker?
Thank you to all the, the administrators and staff. It's a God-Grant-You-Win task, and we've done a nice job. Some of my constituents were concerned more, I think, about the communication and the problem on Friday. I got a number of different calls to not know what was happening on Monday. And I understand how that can happen. My just observation is that even if you don't know, letting people you don't know and you're working on it over the weekend might be helpful. The other thing that I was wondering about is, is the link between the survey and the decision whether someone went remote or hybrid. It seems that that was more than a survey, it was an application. And I was just wondering if in reviewing how you went about these things, you've done so many things right, can you think about how you're communicating some of that information to the families in maybe a more timely way, just to say, we don't know yet? We're working really hard? We should know by Sunday night at 6:00 or something like that? Because people are really anxious about what was happening on Monday. Otherwise, thank you so much for all that you've had to do. This is very challenging, and I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Dave. I think we can, I'll say this, we can always improve on our communication, even when we don't have an answer, we have to say, just hang in with us. Some of those late calls that you got on Friday were because there were switches and changes in hybrid to remote or remote to hybrid, or whatever the choices were. The other thing is, is that when we did the survey, we did it in early September, and things were still, you know, you had just approved the process of going to hybrid. It was early on, and I think many parents at that point were still not sure. So, you know, in retrospect, and a couple of the principals said this to me, that they wished that we had reached out one more time to verify those, those choices between hybrid and remote, and that may have alleviated some of the problems that Mr. Parker just spoke about.
Mr. Crush?
Yeah, thank you. And first of all, to kind of echo what, what everyone had said, Kathleen, thank you to you and your team for, and the teachers certainly have worked hard. I don't want to leave anybody out, but the paraprofessionals, the administrators, the maintenance, it sounds like everyone, your transportation has truly, truly stepped up. Just a, just a question for clarification. So, the ratio is still about 80% hybrid and 20%, 20% remote, is that correct?
It's pretty close. We, I actually started to do the actual numbers today, but I don't have it all, and we'll see what it brings in tomorrow, so I'll have a better number for you. But that's a pretty close estimate of the split between the two groups.
Okay, is that reflective of the faculty, the teachers as well? Is it about an 80/20 split in the same way, or is that different?
No, I don't, I don't, it's even less than that for the faculty. So, we have, and in part because, Chuck, we made every effort to use our faculty and our staff in other ways. For instance, let me give you an example. We, we might not have been able to use an educational assistant at the elementary school because the youngster was going to be in, but the person who worked needed to be remote. So, they're going to work with a youngster at the high school that's also remote. So, do you see what we did? We tried to match up people that, that could remote, but although it might not be in their school. Does that, am I making sense to you? So that they could go from one school to another. So, that's what we did, to try to utilize all of the resources that were available to us. I think we did pretty well with that. We still have, and I don't know the number, I think Larry might have the number, of teachers that are, are on a leave, you know, childcare leave or medical leave. But that's, there are not a lot of them.
No, there are very few, probably, I would say up top of my head, probably six, six to seven.
Okay, all right.
Not many.
All right, thank you.
Questions? We have, I see, does anybody else have questions here on the board? And then I'll, otherwise, then I'll go to Dave.
I want to quickly address one thing. So, there's been lots of pushback around students have to, having to change teachers and people not working with their normal kids. So, this is a classic example of sometimes you have to prioritize things differently. And if we have a remote special needs student and a remote teaching assistant, and maybe they've never worked together before, but they both need to be remote, this is a wonderful way to keep somebody employed and provide services to a student. It's not ideal, and if this wasn't going on, it wouldn't happen. But I really appreciate the flexibility, that we aren't locking employees into one building or one grade level or one place if we can move them around. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that piece of juggling.
Thank you. And Danielle, Ms. Smith?
So, my question, actually, Jim, you had sort of started to get there, and I'm not sure if maybe it's a little bit repetitive, but going back to what you had mentioned about some of those high sections at Concord High School, do you think that there's a need for more teaching staff? I know that you had mentioned the monitors and proctors, but for some of those sections, do you need more teachers?
They'll say that we always need more teachers, right? So, that's a pretty standard answer. I'm a little, I'm going to look to Principal Riordan, and maybe he can be more specific, because I don't want to make a generalization around that, Danielle. I'd rather have Michael answer it.
I think the microphone, you can use the microphone right there, sir. Thank you.
I'll take any staff you have, but we don't actually need more teachers. The problem, the problem, the problem we're running into is that the cohort splits don't always... The problem, the problem we're running into is that the cohort splits don't always work out 50/50. So we have relatively few of those situations, but we do have some. We have one or two that are pretty glaring. And what we're doing with those is to pod the kids right now, which simply means that we'll take a third of them and put them out in the hall in desks for 20 minutes so that they can do work out there. Then we switch up with another four, six kids, or whatever it is. It's not ideal, but it does get us through the first day and through the first week. And we're working on trying to find some more amenable ways of addressing that. But no, it's not a matter of needing more staff, although we definitely could use more some. We don't have any proctors. That would be a big help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Jack, who's taking care of wiping down our microphones in between speakers? Do we have someone that's doing that? Thank you. And Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I think, I want to echo what Ms. Higgins said regarding unique circumstances and how the district is responding to that. Just one question. Do you have enough space? And I keep hearing about remote teachers, some coming in in the classroom, some not. Are those classrooms possibly available for other youth by other teachers if the teachers aren't remote? And could you potentially ask remote teachers to not use their classrooms so you have additional space? I don't know if we need it. It's just, I just wonder about that. But thank you, Mike, for your efforts.
No, Dave, you're right on. That's what we did today. I asked, I dispatched Matt Cashman out to the buildings for that very reason, to identify and look at other additional spaces in the building, and also to give me an idea about some of the sizes of the classroom. Because I looked at them today, and I kept seeing that they're small. And so like we found, there was one class that has like a curtain, you know, that you can pull, and it's like, it becomes almost like a 1,400 square foot room, which is perfect. That means that Paulette can put more kids in that class that she couldn't before. She was at 11. She wanted a couple more in there. I opened that slider. She can have the whole room, and we'll use a classroom that's not being used for that other section that's there now. So we are looking at those, and there are not a lot of them. There's a handful of those kinds of moves, but that's what we're doing. And Matt went out today and was in the buildings doing that for me so I could get a better sense of how we might manipulate those classes to get the kids so that they're not, so that they're in a classroom.
So maybe some of these bigger classes here could get moved into a bigger room.
Say that again?
Maybe some of the bigger classes in this building could get assigned to a larger room or more open space.
Right, and some of them, that's right. Some of them can be shifted, you know? That's a 756 square foot classroom, but this particular section needs a 900 or 1,000. So yes, you'd have to do that. And that's some of the things they're looking at. Those are just subtle things. I didn't anticipate that, honestly.
Well, I, with the fact that you have allowed people to switch in all throughout the last couple of weeks, and I realize that there's a, it's a very difficult decision. I think you're doing a good job as far as doing that, and I fully expect that there'll be some changes and some adjustments that'll have to be made. I have a question, though, is if, and I think 80% is a little higher than we had originally anticipated based on surveys, and also more people are wishing to come in hybrid. Is there anything more you can tell us with regards to those families who either now or over the next several weeks or months determine that one method or another is not working for their student? And when will they be able to change? And how would they do that? Because I know there's a question out there with many of our parents that are just concerned about that, and it's very, you know, it's very reasonable. Can you speak to that at all tonight?
I will. I wanted to write that down. I'll put that out in my next newsletter. I've been trying to get them out on Fridays and keep people informed. It's a great question, and we talked about it today. We will allow that to happen. We want that to happen so that at the semester break or the tri, depending on, elementary is trimesters, you know that, and then the middle and high is like a semester. So we'd allow the switches to happen then. So if they just hang in with what they have, they feel there might be a better alternative for their child, son or daughter, then we are open to that. We want that to happen. We've pledged that flexibility all along to the community. We weren't 100% in terms of our delivery of that, but we, ultimately, that's our goal, Jim. So that's a great question.
And if someone would have a concern or a care, should they be talking to their teacher or to their principal, or to whom?
Yeah, I would talk to the building principal or the assistant principal. They've really been the conductors, if you will, of this planning so that they have a good idea how that can work.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else on the board have questions with regards to school opening? Off the top of my head? I know that there's, I'm fairly confident there are some people in the public who have questions, and I'll just ask you to hold them until the public comment period, which is coming up next, and allow the superintendent to finish her report on some of the other topics. So, but we aren't forgetting you, and we know that you're interested in asking those questions. And if you can just hold a little bit more with a little patience, we'll be there soon. Superintendent, other items you'd like to report to us?
I do. Thank you very much. So the other topic I want, a couple of the topics I wanted to address tonight. The first one was the work in the district around anti-racism. You all know that we have an anti-racism advisory. As a matter of fact, we're meeting tomorrow at 3:30. It will be a remote meeting. We have about 30 participants on that committee that have agreed to work with us. So we will be doing that work tomorrow. We also have this week planned a three-hour training on racial equity for our administrative council. I think you're aware of who that is. That would be all the principals, assistant principals, all of our directors, food service, transportation, facilities, HR, everyone in our office will be participating in a three-hour. That will be the first of many training sessions around racial equity for our administrators. I just want to give you a little heads up. I am planning for additional training for the school board. You asked for it. You indicated your desire to be involved in that, and that's also a recommendation from our, as you know, on our action plan. So in January, when you have your retreat, which I think will be timely, we will have new school board members, and I think that would be a good place for us to begin our own discovery around racism. So just those two things, the training are being planned. I will bring tomorrow a recommendation from the subcommittee to hire New Hampshire Listens out of the University of New Hampshire, which is part of the Carcy Institute on Public Policy. And they have a wonderful reputation throughout the state. A subcommittee met several weeks ago, members of that committee, and decided to work with this group to provide the training for our administrators, for you, for our staff, teachers, and engage in work with our students. As you know, I think, I think it was Mr. Krodo asked me at the last meeting how we were going to pay for that. And Donna was very helpful, and we've written a grant, she's written a grant, using Title II and Title IV monies to pay for that grant for all of that training for our district. So I think we're off and running on the work that we wanted to do. We also began a discussion around, which was, again, one of the goals in our action plan, and that was to address our employees and having it mirror our community in terms of diversity. And so we met, I met with Larry and Anna Marie Di Pasquale last week, and I asked Larry to try to give you a little update on that work. Larry, could you do that?
Yes, thank you. So we did meet last week with Anna Marie, who has a wealth of knowledge in this area and many community contacts. We spoke about perhaps recruiting, first of all, we wanted to get the message out. I think people need to know that this is one of our goals, and we're making attempts to do this. But she talked about folks that are moving into New England and New Hampshire from Boston and as far as away as Chicago. And New England is a, an area that is attractive to folks who want to get away from the hustle and bustle, I guess. And so we talked about advertising in those markets. Also talked about advertising in different colleges, like B.C., B.U., Harvard, even NHTI, UNH. And so that will be part of our initial focus, and we agreed to form a subcommittee of diverse people to try to help us get started in this role. So we're very excited. I think that with Anna Marie's help and guidance, we'll be able to make some inroads in this area, and I look forward to it. And we'll see what we can do over the course of the next couple of months to do that.
Any questions on that? Part of my...
I would just encourage, if I could, Larry, to expand UNH to the entire university system. We have two, a college and a university that turn out outstanding teachers, and I would recommend that they not be overlooked because they don't happen to be the flagship university.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Any other questions? I'll say that this topic is something that's very important to the board, and I want to thank you for the training that we will be getting because we have asked for it, and we certainly can benefit from it. We need it. And I would like to ask you to report next month on the training that the administrators will be having in this coming week, because we would like to hear about that. So if you could do that for us, Superintendent? And Mr. Prince, and you, can I encourage you that, we just heard earlier that we are looking for mentors and proctors and supervisor, you know, just people to assist in our classrooms? And if we could, you know, we have some amazing connections to our communities that have just, of people who have just moved in here, and if we could reach out to them and maybe look to, that we can start hiring some diversity with these initial positions, I think that would be great. I know that it's not always possible, but if we could do that, that would be fantastic. So anyone else?
Agreed, agreed. Great suggestions. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us today?
I do. I want to just speak to the last issue that I put in the agenda, which was the implementation of the Perkins Report, basically the safety issues, the safety issues that we have worked on. So let me just kind of give you an overview, policy work. We continue to do that. This evening, you have a policy that you'll be looking at around discrimination and equal opportunity. So that's been a policy that we have just recently finished. As you know, last month, it was around the sexual harassment policy, which was aligned to the federal recommendations from Title IX. This Wednesday evening, we will have a presentation to the instruction committee on an app for our students called You Safe High School. This is a pilot project that was funded by the National Science Foundation in a grant through the University of New Hampshire. They have a program called Prevention Innovation Research Center at the university. They reached out to me, and we had a presentation from their committee, and I asked members of the high school administrative team to join me. We were very impressed with this app that would be for students' use. The app covers a lot of social-emotional concepts. There's modules within this app, learning modules, also addresses issues like sexual harassment, bullying, hazing. But in addition, it has a reporting element to it. So we thought, we want to pilot that. We would like to pilot it, and we're going to bring it to the instruction committee on Wednesday night for a presentation to that committee so that they can see the tool and the viability of it for our high school students over the next couple of months. I think I wanted to just speak to, and Karen's here too, so she's a great resource. Do you want to speak to the changes that we made in the Perkins Report? That would be great.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see some of you in person. I've talked to you over the computer, but it's nice to see faces to names. As Kathleen mentioned, what we did was, we actually took the recommendations that Ms. Perkins made in her external report and put them in what I would call a poem, a poem, a plan of action and milestones, so that we identified what the issue was, what her recommendation was, who the person responsible would be, who that person is to see it through to its conclusion, you know, what's been done along those ways, what we think our timeline is going to be. And then most importantly, probably, in keeping ourselves honest, what our measure of success is going to be. So just to put it out there and say, hey, here's our goal, and then not, you know, plan for it, and then keep ourselves honest in the end result would, you know, would be worthless. So this is a living document. There were a couple of sections, there are four in particular, that when I reviewed the recommendations, in part based on the new federal regulations that came out with regard to Title IX, that were obviously not in effect when Ms. Perkins made her report and so for example, her recommendations. So for example, she had said, you know, anyone who reports, wants to make a report of sexual harassment, she'd report only to the Title IX coordinator. Well, now, because of the regulations, any employee who is, you know, employed in this district, who has notice, you know, hears something, sees something, is told something, all have a responsibility to bring that forward. So her interpretation was a little more tailored, and so I provided some additional, you know, guidance on why we need to extend that a little bit. We also had some feedback about relationships between students and our, you know, our faculty, staff, employees. And I know that there was a survey done, and there was a group that worked on a couple of those. I think there were five specific recommendations that the students had input on. Anyway, I brought those, and we discussed them at the policy committee meeting, and the members had a couple of additional remarks that they wanted to make. And so what we continue to do is consider those, and then we're trying to find a way to put them out to our principals and assistant principals for implementation. By example, there was one recommendation that if, that if employees have more than an infrequent employee relationship with a student, that they report that relationship to the front office so that it isn't a matter of knowledge, that it is, and so that, you know, everybody's covered. The other issue was that of hugs, and a recommendation was made that obviously, sometimes it's going to occur. It could be due to a sad situation, it could be a celebratory hug, but that it be infrequent, that it be non-intimate, and that it not be done. You know, maybe you have to be more discreet, you have to be more aware of your circumstances and not be doing it behind closed doors with a shade drawn. So just to say that, again, we've addressed the recommendations. I've gone back and I've looked at specifically the policies that we have in effect or that I think we need to work on to put into effect to make them provide more guidance, and then again, what our measure of success is going to be.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So the second one you talked about with, if you have, so like a teacher and a student, and they have a relationship, maybe they're neighbors, is that what that means? Like if you have a relationship with a student that's, goes over the teacher-student one, that you report that to the main, I'm not, I just don't know what that meant.
Sure. I'm sorry for any confusion. It was really based more on an employer-employee relationship.
Oh, okay.
So let's say you have a student who babysits on more than an infrequent occasion, or you have somebody who's working for a teacher over the summer.
Got it.
You know, we want that to be a matter of public knowledge, or that was the recommendation, that it not be a surprise, and that there be a reporting mechanism, and when that's what... And when that's what we're working on exactly how we think that should be implemented. So that it's a matter of knowledge.
Perfect.
Thank you. Sure.
Other questions?
The only other comment I'll make is, is that we reviewed this all with the Communication and Policy Committee. They reviewed it and gave us some direction as we continue to modify these, the goals. And you know, that plan is in your book. I know you saw it in your packet. So you'll see the, the, the action plan to address these issues.
May I ask a question? Is the, we, I, I did read as I was preparing for the meeting, I did look through that all. It's in our book. It's in the, it's in the school board book on the website under the school board. Will this document be on our, accessible from the website so that the members of the community, our parents, will be able to routinely look at this and check the measures that I think you so appropriately brought out? And I'm sorry to drag, ask that question after you came back from the microphone.
I think that's a great point. One of the things I'm working on is a specific Title IX website. And I'd love to put this on as a link on that website so that they can see exactly what you're talking about. They can see what the recommendations were and where we are in implementing them.
And I assume there'd be a link from our website to the Title IX website. I want to make it as easy and as straightforward as possible for anyone, community member, parent, teacher, to be able to access this and see the information.
Yes, just like on the Student Services Director has a sort of a link off of the SAUA, the, the school district website. That's where the Title IX website would be as well.
Okay, thank you. And do you have a timing of when we will be implementing this or your goal?
Well, we're working on the development of her, of that webpage for her.
Okay.
Particularly that. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll get back to you. We're working with Karen Reese in our, in our office to help us do that, so.
Excellent. I look forward to seeing the ongoing reports.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions before we make her run back again? Uh, Dave, go ahead. Mr. Parker, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that report. I appreciate all that you're doing with the district and, and in terms of awareness. I do think we're falling a little bit short with the public. We, we brought this position on with the idea that we'd be addressing this with the community. And, you know, maybe I'm just old, but websites are fine, but question and answers for opportunities to enlighten not only our school district, but the community and to have them be able to be heard about these types of issues. Because I don't think we're all as educated. And I think brought up a really good point with the kid that mows your lawn or, or someone that just does our job. Right now, we're in a sort of a strange place. And, and I think those public discussions would be really helpful. And I would like to see the district being more public, giving more public access, maybe having more questions and answers. It may not be possible, but seems to me intuitively that that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. I know that Kathleen has already talked to me about attending with, alongside her, the community liaison meetings so that they recognize, you know, Concord School District is one of the very few, if not the only, school district in the state that has this position within the, within the K through 12. Okay? And it was beautifully timed because that was part of the new Title IX federal regulations. It's now a requirement. So we're out in front of that. Dave, I would be pleased to do parent forums. I would be pleased to do any kind of community meetings, you know, once we're up and running. And so, you know, your, your comment is, is really well timed and very relevant. And I, I've reached out to some student organizations here in the school to try and make sure they know where I am and I've encouraged them to come to me and feed me information on where they think I can really be of use too. And so we'll keep that in mind in addition to the, the outside forums.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I guess I'll ask.
Thank you. I think it's also, it is the parents and the community. And I happen to be on a community liaison meeting, so I hope that I can help with it.
Yes, sir. Any, anything, you know, as I said, I'm open to any kind of recommendations on where you'd like me to, to go and speak.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. And we look forward to your continued input and participation with Ms. Fisher Anderson because I think that's a great idea. I guess at this point, before we jumped on though, I just want to lean, kind of lean over and see if there's any comments from our student representatives. And there, you know, we heard a lot, but I'm, I want to know what's a student perspective? And do you need more? Or do you think this is a good thing? So can you guys, if you'd be willing to comment?
Sure. So Ms. Fisher Anderson, I think your position is great. I'm really glad that we have a Title IX coordinator at our school. I think I was one of the student groups that you came and talked to for, you came and talked to our NHS leadership group. I think I have awareness in what you do because of my position on the board and I've been involved with that. But I think just as Mr. Parker talked about, just getting, I mean, you're already doing that, but just getting yourself out there more really, if we can have something that, I mean, they probably have in some ways, but just making sure students really know you're there. And I know that your office is put in a place that's good for students to be able to like have some quiet space and maybe it's like slightly out of the way for those actual conversations. But because it's tucked away to make sure that people know that it's there and just, it's a really great resource. But if kids don't know, you or don't know that it's there, they might not know to reach out. So, yeah, you're welcome.
So I, I knew that you were in the building, but I don't think I truly knew that, what you were here for. And so I'm new on the board, obviously. And so this is my first time really hearing it and understanding more of what you're going to be doing, which I think is fabulous because I think there's a lot of things that need to be addressed and people who need to feel that they have a safe place to go. And like Alice said, the fact that your office is well hidden and they feel protected and that they truly have like a safe space to go to, I think is perfect. I think something that you might want to consider is going into classes or I know we have, I, I'm, you might have done that, but I'm not sure if, I forget what they're called, where we go in and talk to.
Oh.
Advisory.
Advisory.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that we talk to you about. You can keep going, but yeah, utilizing our advisories, which aren't currently running, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't believe so. But I think that would be like a great opportunity for you to, because they're small and I think that would be a great opportunity for you to get to know kids like more one-on-one. But, yeah.
Or also, I mean, and we can talk to you about this further with more specifics. We don't all have to do it all in the meeting, but utilizing our bigger platforms like our CHS Live or maybe sending things out through student emails, the big platforms that we have that tends to get like greater student awareness in the building, I think.
Thank you very much. And I guess that kind of the excellent comments by our students made, made me think of, our remote students can still reach you, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I carry a cell phone, I work cell phone, my, you know, I have an email. I'm, you know, as I said, I put posters up in all of the schools, you know, around. I sent a couple. There's one or should be one in each of the commons here. And again, I need to get out there and be on that TV monitor and around. And I think once the kids are back in the building and, you know, they're doing lunch and they see me working, walking through the hall and I can, you know, incorporate myself, I think that'll be really useful. I think the recommendation to get into the classrooms, you know, smart, especially the smaller groups, because if we can have smaller discussions, I even have a conference room and it's a great resource and we put it there on purpose where, you know, we can have smaller groups and we can talk about things like boundary violations and grooming behaviors and, you know, say, okay, when is this, when would it be appropriate? When is it not appropriate? And, and have those discussions. So I'm looking for a place to plug myself in and I'm going to rely, again, please come and see me and let me know. I appreciate it always. And I've already talked to a couple of the teachers to say, if I can get into the classroom and, and we can have these discussions or start them, I think it'd be a great opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you all. Any other questions? All right, Superintendent?
I'm done.
All right, well.
If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't think that's absolutely true, but, but I appreciate that. And at this point, I would like to reach out for public comment on agenda items only. Mr. Dunn, are you ready for, do we have anyone here? Yes, sir. Please come down. Did we clean mics in between? If not, let's do that. There's hand sanitizer available. And please, if you'd be so kind as to state your name for our minutes.
Okay, my name is Roy Schweiger. I think Mr. Dunn knows me. And because you deliberately decided to postpone the vote on Indigenous Peoples' Day so the public could comment, I felt like you'd be disappointed if someone didn't show up and comment.
Thank you, Mr. Schweiger.
That's me. And I guess what I want to say is that I'm not quite sure why we call it Columbus Day because you may know Christopher Columbus was an Italian originally. That's where he was born. And so he had an Italian name when he was born. And then he went to Portugal to try and get them higher and he wouldn't. But, you know, being culturally sincere or whatever, he adopted a Portuguese name when he was in Portugal. And then when he went to Spain and finally came to America as a Spanish agent, he had a Spanish name. So if we're trying to celebrate what he did for Spain, I think they should have called it Cristobal Colón Day because that was his Spanish name. I don't know if he ever went by the name Christopher Columbus or that was just anglicized. Cause I don't know that he ever worked for English. So clearly having a Columbus Day, if we wanted to be culturally correct, we should call it Colón Day. But any rate, I think it's also very peculiar that we call it Indigenous Peoples' Day because I gather the purpose of this is that the Indigenous peoples feel like Columbus was not a hero to them, he was a villain. So why are we celebrating him? Let's call it Indigenous Peoples' Day. But then why do we pick a day that from their perspective was a disaster rather than a good thing to celebrate Indigenous peoples? So what I'd like to suggest is use this as a teachable moment. And historically, what this really is, is Intercontinental Cultural Exchange Day. It's when people from, the people called themselves the Old World met up with the New World and they began a cultural exchange that was continuous, unlike perhaps the Norsemen who came to the North America, but their thing died out and their culture exchange didn't take. But this was essentially the beginning of a continual cultural exchange between the European base of the world and the Americas base of the world. And so historically, that's what it is, is Intercontinental Cultural Exchange Day. It's something that happened historically. That's the correct historical name for it. It's a teachable moment. And, you know, maybe some people feel this was a disaster and not a good thing, but it's like Memorial Day. We don't really feel like having all those soldiers die was a good thing. We recognize it in Memorial Day. So what we're doing by calling this Intercontinental Cultural Exchange Day is recognizing the historical basis of celebrating this day. And if someone can find a more terse way of explaining that, that would be great. But I just feel like both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day are inappropriate for this day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Schweiger, and your suggestion. Much appreciated. Okay. You can just, if you just walk across and back up, that's probably the best way for social distancing. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Dunn, for taking care of the microphone. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir. Come on down, please. And if you just wait a moment until.
Sorry, I'm going to leave.
You're good? Okay. Thank you. And we do have hand sanitizer there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gary Christie Jr. I've been a member of this community for, on and off for about 40 years. First, I'd like to say that I have been thoroughly impressed by what our educators have been able to accomplish. I, I don't think people saying unprecedented times truly reflects what they are, what they're able to, to accomplish. I like members of this community and this board. Our educators and administrators have spent hours over the recent months listening to opinions on how best to maintain education during a pandemic. We all admit, this is no easy task. And there's not a singular answer that addresses everyone's opinion. No one is denying the complexity of the issues that we're dealing with here. The pandemic did not create distrust or anxiety, but it certainly has exacerbated it. I've tried to remove emotion from my review and commentary, but I will say, I was surprised with the significant effort that was put into remote, remote learning that adopted for the beginning of school year. We changed it with less than four hours after the first session without reflection, without review of data, without feedback from students or educators as we moved to the hybrid model. But it was repeated multiple times that this is the best option for the education of the school, Concord School District. And now here we are on the cusp of the full implementation of this new hybrid model and we find that we cannot implement it within the safety guidelines for all students who have opted out of the hybrid model and remote. During the last few months, we've often heard the details are coming and we hope to have more information soon. So we, as a community, waited. Some in this community opted not to participate in the surveys. And I must pause there. The surveys that were sent out by the superintendent's office were a survey. They are not election of a model, nor do they convey a binding commitment. This was evident in last board meeting with several community members as they spoke. It was echoed in the comments of this board and the suggestions from the survey board. I could spend a great deal of time discussing survey information integrity and the bias of aggregate data for making decisions, but I think it's really been covered by some of the folks on this board already and it's a much longer conversation than the five minutes that I'm allotted. The board members here have mentioned they don't appreciate being kept in the dark about issues within the schools, understanding of course that you don't need to be involved in a minutia of any particular building. I'm sure it was a surprise to you to find out that there are wait lists for those buildings two days before the first cohorts were about to report. I want to assure you that I understand open public forum inside this board meeting. It's not meant to be a question and answer and discussion between the two of us. I don't expect you to answer. The following items are in the form of questions for your reflection and if you feel the need, seek their answers. A survey by its definition is to gather information on how people feel. Do you believe asking questions with the use terms possible and preference accurately articulate a binding response? At what point did this administration request a commitment from parents to opt out of a hybrid model once it was adopted by this board? When the hybrid model was pushed, was it conveyed that it would decrease, decrease live instructions for all students for hybrid and the new remote model? At what point after the hybrid model was adopted, was it disclosed that it would dismantle the existing remote plan? When during any communication was it explained that there would be a limited capacity for the adopted hybrid model and students could be denied? Do all students, excuse me, do all schools have or have they had a wait list for the adopted model? And how many students are on that wait list across this district right now? Why was Board Member Poynter's suggestion to the administration to confirm with parents what district, the district had recorded as the elected option for each parent not Do you believe that the superintendent's office misspoke during the last board meeting when they told members of this community that the survey responses were not set in In an FAQ attachment to Polit Fitzgerald's email to parents of September 20th, it stated that due to the complexity of the scheduling, no options could be changed excepting a natural breaks of the school year. If this is indeed true, why did the administration not follow a natural break to aid in the smooth transition of the new adopted model? When at some point in the future, we have to ship back to a remote model, will it be to the current model for students and teachers or be the model that was adopted at the beginning of school year? The majority of these questions, with the exception of my last, are reflections on things that have happened and questions and transparency and ethics. The final is forward-looking and has an impact on the level of the education of our students will be. Again, the new remote model is a significant reduction in the live instruction for all students and educators. I ask that you make sure that we have a complete understanding of it prior to the point in time it's implemented. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also thank you all for taking the time and your willingness to sit on this board, especially our, our two new members. Very encouraging.
Thank you. Thank you for your very thoughtful comments. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cannon. Yes, Ms. Cannon.
I have a significant terminal, and I noticed that your comments are written.
Would you be willing to email me your comments, please?
I was going to say, these will be transcribed based on the fact that we're being recorded. But if you would be willing to share those with us, while we may not be able to answer them tonight, we will get answers.
I understand how the board form works. I don't expect, I really hope you haven't considered it.
No, we do, we really want to answer them, but we probably won't be able to do it tonight. But if you could give us, you know, the copy of that, we will make our very best efforts to answer them and pass them on to the administration where the answers are better from, that are, you know, received from them. They'll have more details than we do. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's kind of bright in my eyes. Do we have anyone else right here? Certainly. And then I, all the people on the phones or in teams will be getting to you as well. So thank you for your patience.
Nice job, Jack.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Christie, and I'm a resident and parent of a sophomore and seventh grader. I'm the emotional side of that. I recently received, or recently emailed regarding my confusion with having received an email that stated my seventh grade son is on a wait list at RMS for the hybrid plan. The correspondence of this keeps going back to my having completed a survey in early September on which I selected the remote option. And despite my having emailed the administration and the board on September 20th saying to not use this data, and my having emailed on the 24th regarding and selecting hybrid as the Assistant Superintendent recommended parents to do, these requests continue to be denied. So considering that the survey continues to be the default response as to why my son is unable to attend in hybrid, I feel it important to delve further into what truly transpired and how the administration is responsible for the inequity that is now at play for all requesting students who want to be in attendance to the hybrid model. At the August 6th school board meeting, Superintendent Murphy recommended that the board choose a hybrid plan. At this time, an overview of the plan was provided, which included details about the groupings, days of attendance, basic safety protocols that would be in place. The Assistant Superintendent estimated that there would be about 400 students in RMS on a hybrid day. The school board was not comfortable with the hybrid decision and approved a remote learning model starting September 8th. Immediately Superintendent Murphy ended the meeting by asking when she can come back to having a conversation about putting a hybrid plan in place. As remote learning plans were put into place, which encompassed four live learning days following a synchronous schedule, the instructional committee met on August 31st and voted for a transition to a hybrid model. Between this time and September 8th, a family preference survey was sent out from the superintendent's office. It stated that, quote, "The school board will consider a possible hybrid model to start later in the fall," quote, and asked to, quote, "Complete a short survey to let us know your preference regarding your children remaining in the learning model, the remote learning model, or returning to school part-time in a hybrid model." The selection I chose, based on the remote learning model in place and the lack of other details for the specific school, stated, quote, "Continue with remote learning." The language of the survey and letter selection is critical in recognizing that up to this point, the remote plan had never been defined as anything other than what was established and was in place. If administration is resolute in using the data from this survey as a final decision, and my final decision, for choosing a learning model, then you need to put into place the learning model that was understood to be the option. Continuing implies that the model would be the same model as was in place at the time of the survey. As a parent, these past six months have brought forth significant decision-making, my kids' schooling being one of them. As more details were rolled out regarding the hybrid plan and there was more of an understanding of safety protocols that would be followed, my family began to wonder if remote was truly the best. Superintendent Murphy gave compelling presentations at the school board meetings, especially on September 8th regarding the social-emotional learning needs of students. And administration continued throughout the month to emphasize the benefits of having kids in school. Additionally, during this time, the remote learning model changed from what it was. But for those of us that completed the survey prior to September 8th, this was all irrelevant. Our decision was locked in, and we were committed to remote. The school board recognized the misleading language of the survey. Many parents spoke up about not understanding the true nature of the survey, and still the data was used. With at least three weeks until the first in-person hybrid day, no new form was released. School board recommended reaching out to families, and families were told to reach out to schools. My family followed all those recommendations and inferred deadlines, still to be denied. It is important to note that had we not filled out the survey, we would have received a personal phone call to discuss our children's learning and likely made the cut. So at this point, the administration has sold me on a hybrid plan, but I'm locked into remote. During these past few months, parents have been asked to make difficult decisions with limited information, and we have asked to be patient and flexible as plans were evolving. Yet this timeline established that this is not a two-way street. There appears to be no flexibility or opportunity for change from a parent's end. And as a means to a solution, they are penalizing those children whose parents made a selection under false pretense of what they were completing. I'm unable to find any documents from the administration that speak to limited capacity or first come, first served for selecting. And I believe the district is responsible for implementing an equitable hybrid plan for all those who want it. Is this the same throughout the whole district? I'm not sure. But if it is not, this inequity for all students requesting hybrid is unacceptable. Nor is the inequity in my home now unacceptable. As I have a high schooler who was able to change to hybrid and now a middle schooler who cannot. So after such a big deal was made communicating to families about keeping siblings together, mine aren't even on the same plan. I do not believe that any of this was done maliciously. But I do believe that administration got themselves into a situation with misrepresented survey data, continued ahead without reflecting and recognizing a need for a true commitment form, and also continued to promote the importance of a hybrid model while not truly realizing that it couldn't actually be done throughout the whole district. I'm struggling with believing that the survey data was the make or break as to whether or not Superintendent Murphy would push for a hybrid plan, as she was adamant back in August to have a hybrid model. And then over 200 people at RMS and 700 at CHS did not even complete the survey. So with unknown data, a hybrid plan was continued to be pushed through. So now, according to RMS frequently asked questions, changes for remote and hybrid can only take place at the natural breaks. Does that mean that my son will now move to a remote team? Then in four weeks, when I continue to push for him to be hybrid, that he'll be moved again? Or does it mean that movement isn't really an option? Because there isn't really enough room in the school to have all those in hybrid who want it? As a fellow educator, creativity and out-of-the-box thinking has never been so imperative in being sure we are reaching all students, families, and community needs. Now, given the situation at RMS and the fact that families need hybrid, it is the district's responsibility to find creative solutions in order to meet their needs. I implore you to address this and find ways for all those who desire the as-advertised best practice for hybrid learning to be able to access their children's education through the approved school board plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Christie.
Thank you. Can you send that one as well? Excuse me, yeah. Same issue. I have some hard time hearing. Would you be willing to send that to us?
Yeah, she's got it.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And once again, you can help me out here because the light's kind of burning in my eyes. Do we have anyone else who would like to? If we don't have someone, Jack and I appreciate the fact, Mr. Dunn, that you are once again wiping off air and keeping our sanitation up to date. When you get a moment, you get a chance to, can we reach out to let our remote citizens ask any questions or make any comments they'd like?
The first one I'll call on is Tony Saez. Tony, because they had their hand raised. I don't know if it was by accident. And I had lowered it because it was very early on in the meeting. But if they want to comment, that's the only reason why I'm calling their name. I didn't want to forget. I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Otherwise, people can raise their hand, and I'll call on them.
Let's give them a few seconds because sometimes there's a delay.
Okay. Ms. Frye, go ahead and state your name, where you're from, and please make your comment.
Yes, this is Kate Frye from Concord, New Hampshire. I just wanted to thank Ms. Karen Fisher-Person for that great presentation and the policy and committee members who listened to her presentation and asked some really, really great questions based on the main concerns of citizens last year. So I thank you all. I think my own comment on that document, and I totally agree that it should be a live document and on a website somewhere so the public is continually updated. There was a, even though Attorney Perkins had recommended that the Title IX coordinator be the only person conducting investigations, I know that the plan was changed to allow it to happen within the school buildings, to allow investigators within the school buildings. And the reason for that is because they could still have the Title IX coordinator work closely with them. And while I agree with that reasoning, and I have 100% trust under Ms. Patterson's guidance, we do have to consider that he won't be with the district forever. And there was a reason that building principles in the first place did not, it was not recommended because we know in the past the buck may have stopped with them when it shouldn't have. So that's just some of my feedback, something to consider. But again, I think the work in this area.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
Mr. Saez has put his hand up. You could go ahead and state your name, where you're from, and make your comment.
I'm from Concord. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, there were some very eloquent speeches earlier. I don't have any prepared remarks like that. But I want to echo somewhat the disappointment that I have in this transition for the kids that will be staying remote. I thought that remote learning was going really well for the past month. And it was so disappointing to get the letter from Runlet that the synchronous instruction will be going down to two days a week. And I just can't understand why that would be the case. I understand in school, the space constraints in the school, in the classrooms. But I don't understand what the constraints are that would, you know, not allow synchronous instruction at least four days a week for remote kids under this, you know, new realm that we're delving into. So it's really disappointing. I was really so impressed at the instruction in this past month, especially as compared to the spring. And I really hope that you'll reconsider, you know, what the plan is, especially for remote. Because I think it does raise the issue of inadequate education. So I appreciate the time and the consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Saez.
That is all I have at the moment, and I have no phone dial-ins.
Well, let's wait a few seconds and see if anyone else calls in. And if not, then we will move on with our agenda.
Nothing?
No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I did have a question. I actually had one of our community members ask me about our process with regards to the resignation of Ms. Patterson last week. And I'll take a moment now to just sort of detail and explain that for the community. He suggested that we just, I'd explain process a little because community members don't always realize the process. The board is governed by state law, our district charter, and our policies in the, that apply to our school district. When Ms. Patterson resigned, it created two openings. One was a school board member as well as an officer. Per the policy, the board is to, actually, the president is to nominate someone to fill in for the remainder of the term until the next general election. It's not really an option. I consulted with the district clerk. The clerk is the official that regulates the election to the board as well as appointments per the charter. So that's why we went through that. I nominated Maureen Redman-Schora because I knew that we only had a few months and that we needed someone who had experience, who would do a good job on the board and contribute and was not involved in the election so that we didn't have a bias one way or the other. And the board unanimously approved. The directions on those items from the clerk, as well as by the policies, is that that takes place in a manner similar to our January meeting. It also created that when the vacancy on the board officers was created as the president's resignation, the policy is such that the vice president immediately becomes the president. And that happened to be me. That creates, because it's not the vice president as an acting president or an interim president, but in actuality, the president, that created an opening in the vice president's position, which was required by the policy to be immediately filled. We held an election in, among the board nomination and election as directed by policy and by charter in a manner similar to what we do every January when we start with a new board. The board elected Mr. Kroto as the vice president. He will, both he and I will serve till the end of this year. And then there'll be a new board. Ms. Redman-Schora will serve until the general election. After the certification of the election, which we refer to as the canvassing of the vote, which is usually the day after, whoever wins that election will assume their position on the board. So hopefully that clarified for people the procedure and processes that we went through. The policies don't give us a lot of time as we are to fill those positions expeditiously. But we wanted to make sure that everyone, all that work took place during the last board meeting. We want to make sure everyone was aware. You know, sometimes we're so close to policies and the district charter that we forget that not everyone is familiar with it. And I do appreciate the questions that people bring to us so that hopefully we can clarify and we can explain them. So, Jack, do we have any more questions?
So far, I don't see any hands raised.
All right. There will be another opportunity for the public to comment or ask questions towards the end of the meeting. Thank you very much to everyone who commented both by phone and in person. You know, your thoughtful comments help us quite a bit. So, and as we do, as we try to do our jobs. And with that, I'll move on to, next topic is personnel. Will Mr. Prince be covering this? Mr. Prince, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. We have two teacher nominations tonight. Mark Meister, the special education teacher at the high school. This is a one-year-only position, and he's at a master's step six, which is a salary of $53,490. And Amy Knight, a classroom teacher at Millbrook, also a one-year-only position, bachelor's step three at $42,993.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept these positions?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Smith makes a motion. Is there a second to approve the positions?
I'll second it.
Ms. Higgins seconded it. Ms. Higgins, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
I would. Gina? Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I say aye. So eight ayes.
Thank you. The motion passes? Mr. Prince?
William Chevanel is a supplemental cross-country coach at the middle school. This is a stipend of $1,350. Scott Guyer, a boys' soccer B coach at the middle school, at a stipend of $2,474. Stephen Shipos, the girls' B soccer coach at Runlet Middle School, with a stipend of $2,474. And Carrie Stone, an assistant cross-country coach at the middle school, with a stipend of $1,350.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Do we have a motion to accept these coaching nominations?
I'll make that again. And I'll second it again.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith and Ms. Higgins. Ms. Higgins, will you call the roll?
Gina?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
(phone rings)
David?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince, do you have anything else for us this evening?
I see on the agenda that there's an item about staff resources, and I, Kathleen, I assume that we're talking about those working remotely and those working in the buildings? Is that what you'd like me to speak to?
Yes.
Yes, yes, she said, Larry. I'm sorry. I realized you didn't hear.
No, it's fine. So I've been, most of my energies have been spent on trying to approve requests for accommodations, and that is that for either medical conditions or childcare issues, or the condition of a family member living in the household, some folks, some teachers are unable to work in the buildings. So we have tried to accommodate most of those requests as we can. I take my, my lead from the building administrators. They, they let me know if there is remote work for folks, and then I've been, as I get that information, I've been approving them. So we probably have maybe 20 or so left that I'm waiting to hear back from on whether or not we can accommodate them. But in most cases, at this point, we have been able to make most of the accommodations that have been requested, so. And with the help of our proctors or classroom monitors, we're hoping that this will help facilitate more folks working remotely, as we will have these monitors in the classroom as kids are learning remotely, or the teacher is chiming in remotely. So we're thinking that that will be a nice, a nice fit for some. There are some we cannot accommodate, and we're working on those, but very few, hopefully. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a report of the Capitol Facilities Committee, of which I am the chair, so I will jump right into that. The meeting that was held on September 14th addressed two topics. The very first was indoor air quality. Given the obvious discussions that are going on with regards to use of our buildings and any school buildings, and the pandemic that is currently in place, the board decided that we would request that there is study be done to evaluate our HVAC system in all of our schools. Mr. Cashman presented the details of that study in conjunction with the Lawson Group, which was contracted to complete the study. Mr. Cashman went through some of the details with regards to the changes that had been made in filtration and his work in conjunction with Train Corporation and Siemens Technology in the process of following guidance to bring in as much fresh air and minimize the recirculation in our schools. The Lawson Group reported to us that based on their study, we were in excellent position. Our HVAC units worked very efficiently and very well, and that he was impressed with our, our maintenance program and our preventive maintenance regimen to replace filters, which are done periodically and involve every single filter, well over 1,000 filters in our schools, and that we were in excellent position with regards to opening the stools for hybrid. So that was very reassuring. Let's see. He also, Mr. Cashman also discussed some of the items we could be doing in the future if we need to, if the pandemic persists, that we can improve air quality even further. And I encourage anyone who is interested in that report to please go to the September 14th facilities meeting notes or the video, because there is a tremendous amount of information presented there. The second item that we covered was the, the old 1905 stable building, which is currently the property of the school district. It sits not very far from where we are right now in the high school, over in, adjacent to what is the student parking area. There has been, over the last few years, a really great effort by the Abbott Downing, the Abbott Coach Historical Society, and I know I just butchered their name, and I apologize for that. But with regards to turning this property into a storage facility and a museum for the Abbott coaches that were, that were made in the city, the first step in that will be to turn the property over to, to the city so that the, upon that transfer, they will be able to proceed with the Abbott Downing Historical Society to, to make this a reality and to use that building. That building is currently not being used at all. It is vacant, and the committee voted four to zero to recommend to this full board that we transfer the stable building property to the city for the purpose of storing coaches owned by the Abbott Downing Historical Society and to serve as a museum. And with that recommendation from the committee, we will discuss it right now. So do I have a motion from someone on the board or on the committee to, to bring this up and to recommend that the full board approve the transfer?
I move that we talk about the potential transfer and recommend that, and the committee recommends that the board will accept that arrangement.
So the motion is for the board to accept the recommendation of the committee and proceed with the transfer of the stable building property to the city. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Ms. Higgins, second. The motion was made by Ms. Pointier. Discussion by anyone on the board, and please let me know if someone raises the hand over my head. Mr. Parker?
Yes, thank you. I was at that meeting. I followed the Abbott Downing proposal for a while, and I, I think this is a good use for that, that property. It's interesting, it was, you know, Concord was one of the largest transportation centers in the world at its time in the 1800s, and we really don't do that much for it, for the history of that in, in town. And I think what's happened is they needed to discuss moving some of the coaches from up on the heights to that location. I would, one of the things I brought up a couple times is, is that there, the use of that building is going to be limited to weekends more than likely because it is filled with student parking and faculty parking, as far as I know. So that, not that that has to be discussed right now, but I, I think it's a great use for that building. It would give us an opportunity to celebrate that historical company in the town, and so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
But I, I would be sure we look at some of the consequences of, of that.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else on the board?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Pointier?
Can you, for the benefit of the people who may not have tuned in to the meeting, can you just describe the parking situation and how it, it will or won't be impacted? As Dave mentioned it, and I think it's important for folks to know about weekend hours and the footprint of the site.
Certainly. Thank you. That's a great point. And Mr. Dunn, if I misspeak or if I miss something, will you please contribute as well? The stable building sits adjacent to the entrance to the student parking. I believe that's mostly senior parking or upperclassmen parking in that location. Just as you enter in from Warren Street, it's a classic building with, like barn doors, as you would expect for a stable. The existing building wood property and the, I believe just the grass right around it would be included in the transfer. There is a ramp that would come out of a currently unused entrance into the building, but I don't believe that would infringe on the parking areas at all. As a matter of fact, the only interaction with the parking at that point would be when they brought the coaches in or out of the building, they would have to block off two or three spaces. And I know Jack's putting up graphics behind me. And so that would be just a temporary blocking while they transported coaches in and out. I believe there are a few, and Mr. Dunn, and that is the building right there. Mr. Dunn, there would be a few parking spaces that the students would lose. Can you tell us a little bit about how many?
We, we don't necessarily anticipate we'd lose any. At most, it would be two. The way, the, the plan is for this to work is that this square here, oh, no, let me just, oh, sorry, wrong computer. This here is all supposed to be taken over by the city, and they would have right of use of about 15 spots through here. There would be a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school district that jointly manage that agreement. There'd be a representative or two from us and a representative or two from the city to make sure that we can work efficiently in an active site. They expect a lot of the activity to be, if it's going to happen on the weekend or at night. The only fundamental question is whether they need two absolutely dedicated spots, and that will work out in the agreement. Plus, the ramp you were talking about would be right off of here, and how that would work, so. And then when it's an active construction site as well, and coordinating that time, and then Matt Cashman would represent us on that component of it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And so there would be two parking spaces, as far as I know, that would probably be going to them. The remainder would be shared along here. And although, excuse me, although you can't see it very well, this is only a very small portion of the parking lot. This is the entrance from Warren Street. If, on, there, there is a possibility that there would be school groups coming in here during the week, and if so, the bus would traverse, drop off, and then exit Pleasant Street. These are all the other parking spaces. Excuse me. So, so the impact would just be mostly weekends and a couple of the parking spaces right there. These would be shared. Am I correct, Mr. Dunn?
That's, that's what our plan is right now.
Okay. And the actual property transfer would be, for lack of a better way to describe it, just the grassy area right around the building. And in front of that is actually a privately owned property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did that answer your question and hopefully made it clear?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Other discussion? Yes, Ms. Smith?
So, in a city that has often destroyed its history, if you go to Dunkin' Donuts for coffee on South Main Street, which many of you probably do, across the street there is what used to be Concord Cleaners. And there's an Obashan Hardware, and there's Allegion, and there's the Unemployment Building. And all of those buildings were factory buildings involved in the production of Abbott Downing coaches. We were, as David said, the leading producer of these forms of transportation in the world. And it's disappeared. There's a green historical sign there, so if you've never seen it, sip your coffee and read the sign. It explains all about this industry. So as an educator and a Concord native, I feel like this is a perfect marriage between the city and the school districts. We're promoting a huge piece of Concord's, you know, culture and history. The city and the school is working together. We're utilizing a beautiful building, you know, and maybe it will regenerate some interest in this piece of our history. So I, from that perspective, I think it's a really good move.
Thank you. Other comments? With that said, then I think we should, it's time to call the vote. So, Ms. Higgins, would you go through the roll, please?
So it was moved by Liza, seconded by you.
That we transfer this property as described to the city for the purpose of the Abbott Downing Historical Society.
So Gina?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Dunn, will you continue to work with the city as we progress on this and then come back and report to us as well?
Yes. Once they will begin writing up the deed and the MOU, and we'll work it out administratively, and then come back to you for final approval.
Excellent. And I assume that will be to the Capitol Facilities Committee and then to this full board?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is a report on the Negotiations Committee. Mr. Crush?
Yes. So we had a meeting on September 15th, and that's what I can say about that. We met. You got to love my reports. But we did meet tonight prior to, prior to this meeting at 6:30, and I do have something to bring forward with the, an agreement with their transportation workers that has been worked out, and just kind of hitting the, it's a one-year agreement for this school year. And just kind of hitting the highlights of the agreement briefly, and I am making a motion that we accept this as a full board. Hitting the highlights of the agreement, though, certainly stress safety, safety of our students in, in PPE, safety of our transportation workers with PPE, hand washing, social distancing, and certainly all the components of, of our safety program that's embedded into our school season procedures. So certainly, that's a key component of the agreement. What we had been doing is we had been up until, and what we're continuing to do up until this Wednesday, 10/7, we had been paying our transportation workers, I believe, and Jack or Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had been paying them on kind of historical hours worked for the, for last, last year. Is that correct, Jack and Larry?
Yes, we, we averaged what they were paid the first 21 days of last year.
First 21 days of last year. Thank you for the clarification. So effective 10/7, we've reached the agreement with the union rep, the union leadership, that we will start paying them for actual hours worked. As you see the buses rolling through the city in the last day or so, we, we anticipate there will continue to be buses rolling through the city, and we'll have work for our transportation workers. So we will be paying for actual hours worked, again, starting on 10/7. Both parties have acknowledged and that we would review this frequently, that conditions may change. We'll be looking to review again in roughly 21 days and kind of keep the dialogue open between the district, and, 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 and workers and their, their representation. So I think it's a very good agreement. They've been very flexible in the process. It's been a very collaborative discussion. Certainly want to thank Kevin Booton, who's the, who's the union rep, the president, Ken Carrier, and certainly Terry Crotto, who, who manages transportation, and I believe Gary Ford, who does the scheduling and the bus routes, which, if you know anything about scheduling, anything is no small task, so, you know, special recognition to Gary in that, in that regard. So, so we're keeping the dialogue going with, you know, with the, with the bus drivers and transportation workers. It's a good agreement. It's a good agreement, and everybody's understanding that we're continually to review conversation. And, you know, conditions may change, but let's have to wait, see how things go. So, again, I'm making the motion that we accept this as a, accept the agreement as a board. If I've missed anything, I will turn it over to Jack and Larry, and I certainly want to recognize them. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize both of them for their, their tireless efforts in working and maintaining that relationship and such a productive discussion. So, thank you, Jack and Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Crush. I will second that motion. And now, does anyone have any discussion or any questions for either Mr. Crush, Mr. Prince, or Mr. Dunn? Without seeing any, stretching my neck, I will then call the vote. Ms. Higgins, will you take the roll?
Michelle. Gina?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I say aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Crush, do you have anything else with regards to negotiations?
Uh, no, no, I think, hey, this is the most I've got to say on negotiations in a long time. So I think I've used all my time. You'd like to say we met, so no, that's like, I talk so much, I talk so much, that's why I'm in, why I'm chairman of negotiations. It's a quiet committee for me, so no, thank you.
It was very nice to hear your voice, Mr. Crush. Thank you very much. We appreciated your report. And with that, we will move on to communications and policy and a report from that committee from Ms. Cannon.
Yeah, the, the committee met on the 16th, and there were three issues that were in front of us at that time. The first was a review of the Perkins Report and the, I guess I would call it commentary from Karen Fisher Anderson about her proposed changes and the commentary also from the community for clarification of what those comments were and why. I think we had a very helpful report from Ms. Fisher Anderson earlier in the meeting today about what those, those four areas of clarification were. And I would encourage anyone who, who wants to know more about why we decided or what the conversation was around those four areas where she had some disagreement with the recommendations of the Perkins Report and why, to either listen to the, the video of that or to, to look at the, the notes from that. But primarily, the reasons were that, that the circumstances under which Attorney Perkins wrote her report and the circumstances that we have today are different because of the federal law that was required to be put into place by the Department of Education on a federal level. And so not all of those recommendations, I, I don't think Attorney Perkins would make those same recommendations today because we have different circumstances and different laws that are required to be followed. The second issue that, that was before us was a new poli, well, not a new policy, but we looked at the policy number 249, which is a records retention policy. And I'm sorry, this gets a little dry and a little boring, but one of the many issues for the administration is how long they have to keep records of a variety of different classifications of types of records. And so we have a records retention schedule. Previously, I believe it has come to the board to modify that records retention schedule, which we all discussed at the meeting, was, was particularly burdensome and a little bit onerous because I don't think the board really needs to get down into that kind of minutia about whether the state says we have to keep it for two years or three years or four years. And so the board discussed accepting the policy, but allowing the superintendent to attach the schedule, which complies with the rules, regulations, and laws, and that we wouldn't need to necessarily review the schedule itself, that her office would be responsible for making sure that that was in compliance. And then the, the committee recommended or voted to recommend to the board that we accept the policy retention and its schedule in its entirety, but allow the superintendent going forward to modify the actual schedule instead of having that come to the board each, each time to modify whether or not they have to keep attendance records for whatever the state, you know, requires. I don't know if Superintendent Murphy has anything she wants to add to that or, no? Okay. So we, we recommend it as a committee that the full board, that it come to the full board and that the full board approve the records retention policy and the schedule in its entirety.
Okay, so.
I would make that motion for the board to please, the motion that we accept the policy and the schedule.
Okay. So, the motion is made by Ms. Cannon. Do I have a second? I will second it. I was at that meeting, and I agree with you on that. So, is there a discussion with regards to record retention policy? That would be policy number 249. Mr. Crush?
Yeah, thank you. So, just a question, and it's more related to COVID-19, so, and records. So, would we take, let me, let me ask the question in a different way. I hadn't even started. So, would we take temperatures of students and things like that related to COVID-19? Do we document those temperatures? I'm assuming we do, and I'm assuming we keep additional records probably due to COVID-19 of internal documents and things of that nature. Is that correct?
I will defer that question to the superintendent.
As you know, okay, that's good. As you know, we do that every day. We take temperatures of every student, every teacher. We do not document that. We do not record it and keep that, that data. What we do keep is those youngsters who do not meet that threshold. So if a youngster goes over 100 degrees, we, we do document that because we could be asked by the, by the Division of Public Health for information. So, that's the only ones that we would document, and that's done with our school nurse.
Okay, so let me ask you, do we, when people come into the school and we ask the screening questions, do we document that?
When, say that again?
The screening questions?
Who comes into the school?
Say a vendor comes into the school or somebody comes in, do we screen them and take their temperature and ask the questions, you know, have you traveled, do you have any symptoms, yada, yada, yada?
Well, we do that, but we don't allow vendors and visitors right now. We're not allowing them into our schools right now. That's part of our protocols. However, if, if we have somebody that comes in, let's say we have someone who comes in, the electrician, okay? And yes, that electrician has the same procedures as everyone else, temperature and those screening questions and the sanitizer, hand sanitizer.
Right, right. So, so I guess where I'm going with this, and I, I made an assumption, I guess my thought process from a, from a legal standpoint, and I'll share with you my insight, and granted, we're in different industries. So, I would, you know, and certainly I didn't think I'd be going this route, but I would not want to be litigated against. If I was an attorney, and the attorneys, Gina, you can speak to this probably better than me, but if I was an attorney and I was going to litigate against the Concord School District, I would certainly ask for you to produce some documentation of temperatures and screening questions and not just on the people that, I mean, certainly check with council, but not just to the people that were the exceptions, but to have some systematic record. All I was going to ask related to document retention is do documents related to COVID-19 of records and data, does it follow the same schedule of, of record retention that on other records under the DOE purview would, would fall into and there's been any direction from the Department of Education regarding COVID-19 documents? But from now, from what I'm hearing, I, I am a little concerned that we don't maintain any type of either electronic or paper trail of records, screening questions, or things like that. Because if I was, if I was going to litigate against the Concord School District, that's where I'd start, asking you to produce me some, some documentation. So, yeah, I guess I'll stop there. So, this was kind of a surprise to me. I assumed you did keep that data. So, but I guess, I guess the question I'll ask you, Kathleen, is, is there any direction regarding COVID-19 documents or COVID-19 student-related documents or faculty-related documents to differentiate between the data and records retention policy 249?
We don't have any direction at this time about retention of documents, so.
Okay.
I haven't received that from the Division of Public Health, nor the Department of Ed, or any recommendation from CDC. But I, I absolutely will follow it up. Certainly, the last thing we want to do is leave the district in a, in a precarious situation. I don't disagree.
I would check with whoever our council is, but like I said, I would certainly check with that.
It is, that will be a, quite a challenge. You have to understand, you take a school like the high school, you're talking about 700 kids walking through the doors, half the population on, on each of the hybrid days, you're talking about another 100-plus staff, you're talking about 800 people that you have to take their temperature and record their names and, and check their screening tool. Now, we do ask parents to do that at home first, you know, we have a, a sort of a, we'd like to think it feels safe. You do it at home with your family, you have your temperature taken, you make sure that you, you feel okay to come to school. And then we do it again, so, but we have not recorded those.
Yeah. I will tell you that I record them and have been advised by council to do it and not to, not to destroy it. I've got about, probably, maybe a box of about, boxes of about 2,000 sheets of paper. It is laborious, it is problematic, and it's, it's, there are some places that's doing it electronically and all kinds of stuff and creating all these forms, but it is, at least in, at least in, in the healthcare world, it is recommended and are required in Massachusetts.
Right. Just think, for the high school, in the course of a week, it's about 2,800 forms and 2,800 temperatures. And I clearly don't have the staff to do that, so I will definitely have to, but I will, I'll, I'll check that out.
Ms. Cannon? Ms. Cannon?
Okay. So, I may be mis, I may be incorrect in my understanding, but I actually have looked at this information on the DHHS, Department of Public Health. And my understanding is that they request that we keep documentation that the students were tested, but only specific informa, and faculty, or and staff, but only the specific information of those people who do not pass the, the questions and the temperature taking are, the records are kept. Otherwise, there's simply that everybody that came into the building was in fact.
Right.
Queried and checked.
Right. But how would you prove that in a court of law?
I'm sorry, Chuck?
If student X comes in and the student X, for whatever reason, accidentally, and things happen, it happens with, you know, what I do, gets missed, how would you, how would you prove that student X had their temperature taken?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, from what I've read from their documentation, they, they simply request documentation that students and staff were queried and temperatures were taken, and those that did not pass were recorded.
Mr. Parker?
Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I, you know, we test our kids as well and try to follow all the rules. Chuck, you know in Massachusetts, other schools that are close to you in your area required to document all of these kids?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. And I could be, look, I could be totally wrong. I, I guess my advantage point is, I just think we should definitely check with council.
I think that's.
Yeah, I will do that.
I think it's a great point, and I think this is something that we need to refer to probably Primex as well as look into any laws or regulations that. Because there are a lot of new laws associated with COVID right now.
I would agree. Thank you.
But I do think we should definitely look into it. Employer guidance, I know, is similar to what Ms. Cannon said, and employer, you know, I guess it's the universal guidelines and requirements, so, superintendent, if you would look into that, please, so that we are in compliance.
Can I make, Jim?
Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I, just one observation, Chuck brings up a good point. I've been in school since the 4th year, in an in-person model. The thing I would, so I must want the head, and the thing that concerns me is classing people. You know, kids are really great about math, they're good about distancing, but it's easy to fall into a sort of, you know, casual, be casual about it, and it really requires to, reminding our communities all the time, parents to check their kids, one of the kids to check, help any other kid to school, make sure you get the tested, those type of things. I think they're important to remember as we move our forward kids coming into our facilities.
Okay, thank you. You're breaking up a little, but I do believe we were able to hear most of what you said, which was that we, and people can add to this if, if they, that we need to stress that, you know, parents follow through and, and this is something that we've said all along, is that we are, you know, the school is testing, but we are very much asking parents every morning to test their children, high school-age kids can test themselves quite often, to fill out those, those questions. And if there is a reason to stay home, the students should stay home. And everyone should be testing every morning. This morning, my family was all, you know, temperatures good, I was 97.3 to be exact. We filled out our questions, and we certainly encourage, as we move into the hybrid mode, that everyone do that each and every morning. And Ms. Poignier?
It was briefly discussed at, I think, the instructional committee meeting that we might want to look into apps, and I'm guessing that the administration is doing that. This would be a really, really good reason to pursue that because then we would have data over time for each kid, and we would be able to say, instead of asking all the questions each morning, we could, you know, have them flash their cell phone, shoot a QR code, or, you know, there are a lot of ways to make sure that the temp has been taken and the questions have been asked before they even get to campus. So, assuming that we're going to be doing this for at least a couple more months, it's definitely worth further investigation. Thanks.
That's a, that's a great point, thank you, Ms. Poignier, that if we can use an app for morning temperature checks and for screening questions, that sounds like a great thing to make available to us. And if you would be so good as to look into that for us, or have Ms. McLeod look into it for us, I think that would be, I think we'll get better and better at this as we move along. Any further discussion? Anybody over my head? If there isn't any further discussion, there is a motion on the table to be voted on to recommend to the full board that we approve the records and retention policy and schedule in its entirety. Am I correct, Ms. Cannon, in that?
Yes.
All right. So, Ms. Higgins, would you please call, call a roll of votes?
I'd be happy to. Gina?
Yes, aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
I'm going to abstain based on the fact of my recent questions about COVID-19 records and data retention. So I'm going to abstain as I don't have enough information to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So.
So seven ayes and one abstention.
The motion passes. Ms. Cannon.
Okay. So the next policy that we looked at was a new policy, which is number 161. I hope the boards had a chance to look at it. It's pretty dense. It is, it was designed to shuffle in to our policies behind policy number 160, which pre-existed. And I gave out copies of policy 160 to the board. And it can be, policy 160 can be found in, on the website, if you go to policies and scroll down to 160. But 161 was necessitated by the Department of Education's new federal requirements to comply with the harassment and nondiscrimination. And there needed to be, set out a particular grievance procedure, which was a bit cumbersome to try and change policy 160. So 161, we're going to sort of put in behind 160. And 161 lays out what the grievance policies, what the complaint policy, or what the complaint procedure has to be to comply with the new federal law. If we approve 161, then 160 can be reviewed to see whether we need to change that also. But in the interim, we can't take out 160 and not have 161 in place, because then we're not in compliance with the federal rules. So it's pretty, it's kind of complicated. Again, it's pretty dry. But, so after going through all of this at the Policy Committee, the motion was made and approved unanimously to recommend to the board that they accept policy 161 for a first reading, so that we can review that. Now, do we have to actually read the first reading?
No, we don't have to read this in its entirety.
Sorry, I'm new.
But I will say, this is a first reading. We will not be voting on this policy tonight. We will be voting on it after the second reading, which will be, you know, scheduled for the next full board meeting. Policy 161, for anyone who in the public who would like to read it, is included in the board book for this evening, on the website, under School Boards and the October meeting. Policy 160 can be read in the same location, but instead of being under the School Board meeting for October, it is under the Policies section. This is just the first reading, and we will discuss it and vote on it next time. So thank you very much. Unless someone has a question or a discussion at this point. Does anyone have a question with regards to that?
Oh.
We will-
Jim?
Yes.
I do actually have one thing I wanted to say. One of the questions that was raised at the Policy Committee was why the classes of protected people differed in various sections of this policy. And we asked our Title IX Coordinator to please look into that. And she reported back to me that the reason for that is that it mirrors the state law. So the state law protects some people under Provision 1 and other people under the Second Provision. So our policy mirrors the state law.
So, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I remember that discussion. And thank you to the Title IX Coordinator for finding that information out for us. So Policy 161, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity employment, is given to the board for first reading. Public comment can be made at any time, and we will bring this up again next meeting. So thank you very much. Do you have anything else to report?
Nope, that's it.
Ms. Cannon, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to report from the Instructional Committee. Ms. Higgins.
Okay. Well, the Instructional Committee has been very busy the past couple of months. So our last meeting, which was September 23rd, was essentially an overview and a preview for the board and the community on the plans for implementing hybrid. We had incredibly thorough explanations and presentations from elementary, middle, and high school principals and building staff. The admin staff at the SAU office presented safety plans and protocols put in place should there be positive tests, and people that need to quarantine and such. It was a very, very productive meeting, tons of questions. It was three, two hours and 45 minutes meeting, but it was very, very, I thought, helpful at the time. We are one day into everything that was presented at that meeting. So Wednesday of this week, we're having another Instructional Committee meeting here. I asked for it to be in this room, because when you have building principals and school staff and us, that would fill the boardroom up with no room for public. We didn't have a lot of public come last time, but I feel it's important that they know that they can. And we will have updates and reports from all of the building-level principals, well, elementary, middle, and high school, on how it's gone. We'll have had two, you know, both cohorts in by Wednesday, and we'll get, you know, a good handle on how things are going. I could go over the pages and pages of what we discussed, but I believe that from September 23rd to now, anyone with a child in the district has gone over all of those and knows what is and isn't happening. I would encourage people watching to formulate questions, well-written observations and how you're feeling about things. We do get a lot of emotional feedback to a lot of this, which is completely fine. These are your kids, we get it. But we also really do listen and take to heart suggestions and comments that are made. So this would be a good time for parents on both sides, kids that are remote and kids that are in hybrid, to share with us what's going on. So that will be here Wednesday night at the high school.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions with regards to this meeting? And thank you, Ms. Higgins.
Yep.
The final committee report will be Finance. Mr. Crotto is not here, but Ms. Poynier is here. So I'm going to ask you to lead the discussion with regards to the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. The minutes from the Finance Committee meeting have not been prepared yet, so I'm actually going to kick it over to Jack in a second. But most of what we discussed at the September 30th meeting was the school year budget that has just wrapped up, the current school year budget, which will be, the final, final version of that will be presented in a month or so. And it depends somewhat on some numbers to come from the city. And we also had a preliminary conversation about the budget for the 2021, 2022 school year, which is looking a little bit, I'll let Jack tell you. Jack, would you care to give a quick overview of our conversation?
Sure, I can do that. I want to, I do want to note that this meeting's minutes were finished up this afternoon. They're posted under the Committee Minutes draft. So it's just, from a timing standpoint, getting the board book and people being out, we didn't have time to get them in for this book. But this is just a draft, they're going to be corrected and finalized. But we'll have you vote on them later on this month. We're not looking for a vote for these tonight, because they're in rough draft form. But to piggyback on what Liza had said, I think the big highlights, when you look at FY '20, we ended with a significant balance in June that was about $2.1 million more than what you needed. And the board given the administration authority to put that into your trust funds that you control, and that you need to take a vote to withdraw those, in anticipation that this year would be difficult, and '22 will probably be very, very difficult. Right now, as we look in FY '21, you know, salaries and benefits, as we're talking about hiring potentially additional staff with these different needs to get through the school year, we'll continue to monitor that. Did see that the weather forecast isn't looking spectacular in the snow arena. That always is a concern. But also our utilities, as we mentioned in that meeting, the buildings are running at 100% fresh air. The cold weather has not started to kick in yet, but we're anticipating a potential negative 135,000 in natural gas, because we're going to have to heat that air, which we believe means it's going to be running more often. Again, just a preliminary estimate. You have a couple hundred thousand in your energy risk reserve. So I think I've said from the beginning, when we even finished this budget, I haven't been overly concerned about FY '21. It's always been FY '22. And I think the decision you made to allow us to put that money away into those trust funds, that also contributed to your savings of about $450,000 a year in refunding the elementary school bonds. All of that is taken to effect by the rating agencies. And that was a factor, that you had healthy reserves in preparation for this. So I just want to note that, because you get a very good rate in your refinancing. Again, PPE and technology for this year also are a big item. We expect that there'll need to be a lot of repairs, and also the PPE is looking at almost about $10,000 a month, I mean, a week, in what we're buying. And that's just, and the kids are not back yet until today. So we're going to see if those needs increase. And as we go into FY '22, our friends at New Hampshire Retirement have announced their rates, and they're going up. For the teachers, they're going up 3.22%, and for the non-teachers, 2.89%. So just to give you a perspective on that impact, if you were to just increase the current salaries by these rates, it's about a $1.3 million increase in the budget. That's what, no salary increases yet. Okay? That's just a rough estimate. But that will be, the big thing is revenues for next year, depending on how the state operates, and they're in there biannual, and what they have, and the money for the increased adequacy. That was only for these past two years, that goes away, and you're probably looking in the mid-single digits for health care increase. And again, that's all that before any staffing changes or salary increases. So brace yourselves, for those that are retiring from the board, well, you're leaving a gift behind, which will be our budget. And we did put in the minutes, the Budget Work Sessions. We have posted them, with the first Budget Work Session being February 3rd, and I believe passing a budget on March, Wednesday, March 24th. That's the goal. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chuck.
You're welcome.
And I'm all set.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Poynier, and thank you, Mr. Dunn. We'll be discussing budget, I'm sure, at length, as we move on through the end of this year and into the schedule you've already presented us for budget next year. It is a lot of uncertainty, and I'm sure we'll have, we'll have a lot of diligent work evenings on this. That concludes our committee meeting reports. Let's see, in other business, I believe Mr. Crotto was going to speak on the superintendent's search, but I think we will postpone that, since he is not with us at this point, unless Ms. Smith would like to say something.
I don't have an update from him.
No update at this time from the team, but we will definitely have that on our agenda next time. The Superintendent, will you have anything to talk to us? We deferred our discussion of how we would list Columbus Day. We had wanted to talk with the city and do something in conjunction. Can you give us an update on that as we discuss this topic?
Just as long as I don't touch the microphone and it falls-
Keep your hands to yourself.
Keep my hands right here. We are having a meeting with City Council on October 16th, where that will be on the agenda to discuss the change from Columbus Day. And I also, with our meeting tomorrow with our Anti-Racism Committee, it was suggested to me that that would be a great topic to bring up and have that discussed with that committee. It's a terrific group, and they all have a very nice perspective about what their thoughts are. So those two areas, right now, to discuss that. Other than that, we haven't done anything else with it.
Okay. And I would ask you to relate to them, Mr. Swiker's comments from earlier today-
I will, I will.
And his suggestion-
It's actually a good suggestion.
-for discussion. But does anyone have any discussion on the board? Ms. Cannon?
Well, I guess my only concern is that the meeting with the city is on the 16th, and the day is the 12th. So I would once again, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it, but I would once again ask the board if we can discuss, if we can't call it something else, can we simply say, "No school"?
This is very much an appropriate time to discuss that, since you brought this up, and it's something that we deferred to now. Other, Ms. Richards?
I just have her support in calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day. I wrote some stuff down, so that I would get everything covered. But, so I think the importance of calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day, well, it's the protest of the conquest of Native American land by Europeans, and also to celebrate the indigenous people, rather than Christopher Columbus and the European conquerors. And it also just calls attention to the loss and massacre of disease and forced assimilation. And also, in our efforts to, this year, when we've been talking about reforming our curriculum, I think it's helpful to not push the continued American imperialism and whitewash history going forward, that we've had a lot into our curriculum. And I think, rather, this could be a teaching day for our students and just members of our community, as to why we shouldn't glorify Christopher Columbus, and should rather teach the real realities of the event. And I mean, even if we changed the name, hopefully it could be another reason to maybe get it in our curriculum surrounding the days, or celebrate in our elementary schools, or all levels of our schooling. And I just think celebrating the indigenous people and talking about the realities of the event, rather than glorifying the European conquerors.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
If there's pushback to officially change it, if that's not something that, I mean, I think as a school district, we can call it whatever we want. But if there's any pushback from that, we could simply not refer to it as Columbus Day, and then work to come up with a, just sort of like what Gina was saying, just not, we have no school on Monday.
Well, other comment?
Gina?
Another discussion? Yes?
I mean, my preference, which I've stated before, would be to call it Indigenous Peoples' Day. But if the board is not ready to take that step without having discussed it with the city, and what the ramifications, and as Mr. Parker likes to tell us, the unintended consequences of that-
Right.
-then perhaps we can simply, at this time, say, "No school." Because I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate, in light of all the discussions that we're having, to be tone deaf-
Right.
-to what that name means and implies.
Right.
Other comments?
Janita?
Yes?
But I definitely think that it's important that it's called Indigenous Peoples' Day. I understand where there'd be some pushback for keeping it as Columbus Day, and as was suggested to, you know, have a separate day for it. But I do think that, you know, as Alice said, there's a lot of things that have been just glorified in history that I really think shouldn't be. And I think for a lot of, you know, we have a lot of refugees coming here, and I think that it's really important that they know that there are indigenous people here, and we do celebrate them, you know, that we're not going to glorify this person. I know that, like Alice said, there were a lot of, you know, terrible things that happened, and a lot of kids don't understand that, and it doesn't get taught in our curriculum. And I think it's really important that we start talking about it, so.
Alice?
So other comments?
Yeah. Oh.
Sorry, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I totally agree with the sentiment about changing the name. I think we're educators, I think we haven't evolved the community to the degree we should. I think it will have certain independent thoughts on what I believe in philosophically and practically. But I think not calling it Columbus Day would be a big step, and working on appropriate with some public discussion. It just, there's something about it, we have discussed a lot of it, we are, I think it's too soon without getting more public input.
I don't believe it's too soon to stop calling it Columbus Day. I don't believe it's too soon to stop calling it Columbus Day. I think we can take that.
Oh, I, no, I, I agree with that for sure.
Chuck, has his hand up, Jim?
Thanks. Mr. Crush?
Yeah, so I, I can't really see, you know, I think we're kind of, I think our inaction is going to be heard louder than a wrong action.
Yeah, good point.
I, I think us sitting here debating this, given we've been talking all about, you know, inclusion, and making sure that, you know, that we are, have that kind of spirit of the community, and, and making sure that we are not reflecting a history that is wrong. So I'm going to make a motion that we call Columbus Day, or what was formerly called Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'm making a motion.
Okay, so Ms., we were just having a general discussion, but we now have a motion that we, at the school district, change the terminology from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
We have a second for Ms. Smith. More discussion.
Alice?
Thank you, Chuck. You beat me to it.
I'm sorry, I was, I was just, let's let Allison end your.
I just would again like to speak in support of the motion. I understand the want for community input, and I think that's important, but I think it's, the name has already been adopted by many places. It's, a lot of places have changed from Columbus Day. And it also just worries me, the lack of a name. I think that also puts out a statement, because we're not committing to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We're trying to like, I understand, even if we're trying to get community input, it might come across as that you're taking a neutral stance, rather than supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I think that could come off in a bad light. And instead, we should just be supporting the name that would, I think would be best for it to be called for many reasons.
I actually agree with that. Chuck's comment about the wrong action is better than no action. I mean, not that this is wrong, but you know what I mean? That made me rethink.
Well, I actually did some research on this and found out that there are quite a few states that have no name, including California, which has just not designated this anything at all. Colorado has this as Cabrini Day, I believe, or something different one. But there are an increasing number of states. I know Maine has done this, I believe. There are an increasing number of communities that have adopted this recently. I believe there is recently six or seven states have adopted this. Very many communities. And the other community in, there is one community that I could find listed in New Hampshire that has adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that's the city of Durham. And then, so I believe either one is appropriate, but I certainly, certainly feel and agree with your sentiments. So more comments? Yes?
I'm very enthusiastic about the potential name change. I think it should be Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's already on the school calendar as Columbus Day. So I think we just need to be aware of that. It's a week from today, and so in terms of making it official, I feel like we can, we can go ahead and have the vote and lead the way. But I also want to make sure that we're working closely with the city, as has been proposed over the last couple of months, and encourage and help them to make the same move for the city of Concord, because we, we can do it as a school board, and that's great, but even better if, if we can, you know, stake that claim of leadership and say, this is the right thing to do, this is what the students want, this is what the board wants, and let's go for it.
We have wonderful leaders, don't we?
Yes, we, we really, just to, to clarify, we only have jurisdiction over our school district. However, that calendar could be changed tomorrow morning.
If you want to get your Sharpie out.
Should, should we make this decision, I am confident that the district has the ability to change all of our websites and various things fairly quickly. So I believe that change could be made by tomorrow morning. More discussion?
Maybe tomorrow afternoon.
Mr. Parker?
No pressure.
Yeah, yeah, I've changed my mind. I'm in favor of it. The students were eloquent, and I didn't realize the breadth of usage. Certainly, I totally agree with the sentiment. So I've changed my mind. See, I'm an educator, I'm a learner. I can learn. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Other comments? Let me see, who am I?
Maureen.
Lyndon.
Lyndon, Ms., yes. Lyndon, what, what would, what would you like to input to us?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if you could be very careful to clarify the motion to set the exact parameters, because as you mentioned, the board doesn't have the authority to declare Indigenous Peoples' Day outside of the district. So are you talking about it being known within the district? Are you talking about it on the calendar only? Could you just be more specific about that, Maureen? Thank you.
I believe so, but because I did not make the motion, I will ask Mr. Crush?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll clarify, and I will solicit help from other board members and our, certainly our student representatives, because I feel like they probably have more insight over this than, than any of us, quite candidly. With that said, I will clarify the motion to, I move that the, the calendar of the Concord School District, as well as associated language used within the schools, by school personnel, either through hybrid learning or remote learning, will refer to the date of, what is Monday's day? October the 10th, I believe. October the 10th as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
It would be, I believe, October the 12th, and you may want to make that, you may want to make that motion to be the second Monday in October, because the date changes, and, and it's more set on the Monday, I believe. But someone else can correct me if I am wrong.
Thank you. The second Monday in October, the, yes, that that be termed Indigenous Peoples' Day in our communication to our students, to each other, as well as reflected in school documentation, reflected in the calendar. And that's about as good as it's going to get for 10-0-10 for my motion.
All right. Lyndon, were you able to capture that motion?
And if you were, God bless you.
I did, in its particularity, every specific, God it all.
Thank you.
Wow, go, Lyndon.
Thank you. Does the, does the school administration have any comment on this?
I was just checking the following years to make sure we were on schedule for the second Monday, but, but you're right. And no, we don't have any comment. Obviously, we've been working to change language, and to change positions, and to better understand and reflect the, the notion about equity, inclusion, and our, and our fellow men. So this is, this is, this reflects, I think, what this district is all about.
Very good. And I do believe that we review the calendar through the instructional committee every single year, so that will be coming up in November or sometime later this week. So if we do make a mistake, there's probably an opportunity to correct it for next year at least, and then the board can resolve it. But I think this is a fairly accurate motion. Is there more comment or discussion? Not seeing anything. I would like to call the vote on the motion. Ms. Higgins, will you please take the roll?
I will. Gina?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye, and I would just, I hesitate to comment a lot because of the feedback and everything, but I thought the students were eloquent. I love that we had so much research. I, when I was checking this on my phone earlier between our meetings, it's listed both ways, just in the calendar in my phone already. So I don't think that we're doing anything that's overly controversial, and I'm proud of our students for making those comments.
Thank you. David?
Aye.
And I say aye. So the motion passes easily.
This motion passed unanimously, I believe.
Yes, yep.
So superintendent, would you please make these changes as per the board's direction?
Add it to your list.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Thank you, student representatives, for your, your discussion with this as well. Is there any other business we have prior to going into our proposed calendars? All right. Superintendent, do you want to lead the discussion on proposed calendars? If you would?
I'd be happy to. So if you take a look at your October calendar, you have a very busy month, and you will be, you have an instructional committee meeting, which we will hold here at Concord High School in the auditorium. As Mrs. Higgins indicated, that meeting starts at 5:30, and we will have it broadcast on Concord TV, and access, obviously, people can attend, but also, if you have questions, you would use ConcordInfo@SAU.org. So obviously, the 12th is a holiday, and we have just renamed that. Congratulations to everyone. I think that's fabulous, and we will do everything we can tomorrow to change it to the appropriate name of Indigenous Peoples' Day. So it's great, terrific. On the 14th, we have a policy and communication meeting that will again be at 5:30. I will talk to the chairman, Mrs. Cannon, on that to discuss where, but I'm assuming that we'll have it at the SAU office in the, in the boardroom. And then there'll be, obviously, your regular executive board meeting that you have, where you plan the calendar, and you plan your agenda for the November meeting. Another instructional meeting, which is really important. We're trying to give everybody an opportunity to share and, and, and give input to what we're, our plans as we move forward. And we'll have a finance meeting on the 26th at the end of the month. November brings us right into November, and it's, again, pretty much repeated throughout. School board meeting will be the first Monday of the month, on the 2nd. I want to remind everyone about Election Day on November 3rd, important day, get out to vote. I hope all of our students who are eligible to vote are registered, and will be able to, to do that. I think it's an awesome event, and it's a, a privilege to be able to go and cast a vote in this country. So we don't have any school that day. You know that they do use Broken Ground as one of the voting sites. The, the city has also asked that we might, they may want to use Abbott Downing because of the, the immensity, if you will, of this election, that perhaps the, the voting at Ward, ooh, I think, which one is it?
Seven.
Seven, at Ward 7, learning all those wards, and wouldn't, wouldn't hold the numbers that we need. So, and I think there's issues around ADA and so forth, so Abbott Downing will work.
I would expect in Ward 7, that their polling location is also pretty difficult for social distancing as well during the COVID crisis, and that they may need additional space on that.
Yeah, they're working with Jack on that, so we'll keep you posted on that in my, in my weekly, my weekly news.
Yeah, there's no parking there.
Another meeting with Communication Policy Meeting for the month of November. We want to get a lot of these things in before you start your budget work. You know, I think Jack mentioned tonight in February, so we're trying to get in all of the meetings now, because you, you'll get taken up by the budget. Veterans Day is November 11th. Again, no school that day for our students and staff. 16th will be the Joint Finance and Capital Facilities. Again, a really good place to plan for you as you move forward. Another Instructional Committee. Again, I will work with the chair of the committee, Mrs. Higgins, to set the, set the agenda for that, but we will be working on the enrollment report that you do annually. We're working on that right now, so that you'll have good data as you move into your budget season. Executive Committee at the end of the month, and then we have Thanksgiving recess, which will start on the 25th, Thanksgiving on the 26th, and schools are closed on the 27th. So you can see you have a very busy couple of months, right? So.
We do, and Mr. Crowder has asked me to ask about putting in a non-public meeting on the superintendent's search. I would suggest the 19th. I don't see a very much of an open day before that after the executive committee meeting. Does anybody else have a better day for that?
Well, we have Wednesday, the 28th, although to do it on the, Wednesday, October 28th, there's no meeting.
We do, I think that's a little late. I think if we did it on the 19th, the executive meeting should only last till 6:00 and then do that. The executive committee meeting would be a public meeting, the next meeting after that at 6:00 would be a non-public meeting to discuss our superintendent's search.
That's a good idea.
And I believe Mr. Crowder has asked for that.
And your executive committee always starts at 5:00.
Correct.
So that does give you a little, little wiggle room.
For the sake of our community members listening and, and all, can we go over, the Instructional Committee is going to be here at 5:30 on Wednesday?
Yes.
A week after that will be the Communications and Policy Committee meeting. That will be at the district offices in the school board room. That will also begin at 5:30. The executive committee meeting will also be at the district offices. And the Instructional Committee after that, we will wait and see as to what we need. All of the public meetings are open for, oh, and, and finally, the 26th, which is a special board meeting of finances, will most likely be at the district office, but we wouldn't inform anybody if that changed. All of our committee meetings are open for public comment. They are not, we only really have the teams format and call-in during the, the school board meetings. Anything that's in a committee meeting is ultimately discussed and voted at at these meetings, and open for comment for the vote, be heard a vote. The reason for that being technically and on staffing and, it's very, very complex to have a meeting like we're having here tonight, and very difficult to, to put forth. So we want to make sure that we have that here for these meetings, so that there is as much possible input as possible, so that everybody can have a chance to, to weigh in. We, as we discussed in the last full meeting in September, we will have the opportunity for public comment at committee meetings, but it won't, it'll be, and it will be on Concord TV. And hopefully, we had some problems putting it on YouTube. I don't know if it'll be on YouTube anymore, but it's on Concord TV, both on the television, Comcast station or the local station, as well as on their streaming on their website. So it is, those meetings are typically visible as well. So just wanted to be clear on that, to reiterate what we had said, so that people understand. We do want your comment, and anybody who has any comments or any concerns can always email the board, or ConcordInfo@SAU8.org. And there is some more information in there, but at that point, we are to a point of our second public comment session, which in accordance to Board Policy 132, is open for any comment on, on subjects from the public. We do ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, as per the policy. So Jack, do we have any public comment right now?
Before, I don't see any hands raised.
We'll wait a few minutes, just to give everybody an opportunity, because there is sometimes a few seconds delay between the television, the website, and us here live. Does anyone in the public have comment? Jack, do we see anything?
I do not. Come on.
All right. Being as it is, 10 o'clock, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, and who seconded?
Chuck.
Chuck, Mr. Crush has seconded Ms. Higgins' motion. This can be a This can be a voice vote motion, this doesn't have to be a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone in the public as well.